Okay. Want to hit the door already? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call to order this June 2nd, 2022 meeting of the City and Nashua Planning Board. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mayor Donjus, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclerc.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. John Cathy. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger. Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Meehan.
Here.
Ben Clements.
Okay, so we have a quorum. We're going to continue to move forward with the agenda. Next up, we have for the board, there's some minutes from the May 19th, 2022 board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at these minutes? I want to make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments. Mr. Hirsch?
Motion to approve the minutes of the May 19th.
All right, so you have a motion to approve as written from Mr. Hirsch for the May 19th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions? One abstention?
I think abstain was not here.
So two abstentions. Okay.
You?
All right, so that motion passes. All right, next up, Communications.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow members of the planning board. The following communications arrived after your mailer was sent out. May 26th amended agenda, case A 220137 Cadwell Road, updated staff report, A 210299300, 301302145 Temple Street, email from Wayne Husband, June 1st, 2022, Atherton Avenue, Soccer Fields, case A 220086, an email from Ann Andon dated June 1st, 2022, case A 220114 and 0115, that's for the charter school. Matt Sullivan had two emails, both dated June 2nd, 2022, correspondence from Commissioner Frank Edelbutt to Celia Leonard, June 1st, 2022. And you have the staff report for that case, 0114, and the staff report for the other case, 0115. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Any reports of the committee? Any? None? Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the procedure in the meeting. So first off, after each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read by myself. The board will first determine if the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Next, I will ask for testimony from the public. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to a plan to go ahead and speak. This is your time to come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and it's time to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. For anybody on Zoom, it'll be the same process. We'll just have you either raise your hand on Zoom or just speak up and then same process. After that, I'll next ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time we'll deliberate and vote on the application that's before us. We ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. At this time, I'll thank everybody for their interest and their courteous attention, and if you do have a cell phone, please go ahead and put it on mute or vibrate, and if you are on Zoom, please stay on mute until there's the public response time at which you'll be called on by the staff. Okay, so first up, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, case A 22-0064, that case has been tabled until our June 19th meeting. That will not be heard tonight. Old business site plans, there are none. Next up, new business conditional special use permits. This is case A 22-0115, Microsociety Academy Charter School owner, application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to show a two-classroom modular building along with associated site improvements. Property is at 591 West Hollis Street. In conjunction with that, there is a new business site plan, A 22-0114, same owner, same location. So I'm going to hear those two together. I think I have a comment or something that I'd like to hear from Mr. Sullivan first and just for the board's use, and then we'll have the applicant come up after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Matt Sullivan, Community Development Division Director. I want to start by thanking you for your patience and understanding as we conveyed some materials to you very late in the day. We've been working diligently with the applicant and their team to specifically provide clarity about how the board should be treating and hearing this use application before you this evening. I did provide to you a brief statement that addresses this and how the board should proceed, but I wanted to, for the sake of the record and sake of the applicant who has not had really due opportunity to review this, just repeat this for the matter of minutes and hopefully provide clarity to the board before you take action this evening. So I'll simply read verbatim what's included in the statement if you don't mind. As you're all aware, at the board meeting of May 19th, 2022, staff recommended a continuance of this non-binding public hearing on 591 West Hollis Street under RSA 67454, and we had provided due notice for that hearing at that time. And specifically, that was provided until such time that legal guidance could be provided by the city's Office of Corporation Counsel on the application. The recommendation was agreed to by the applicant, and I want to thank them for their patience in agreeing to that and their flexibility, particularly because even at that meeting, information was conveyed very, very late to them, and they were put in a challenging position as far as how to proceed that evening, and they were very flexible with us. So I do thank them for that. The legal matter at hand specifically involved alternative interpretations of the statute that I referenced before, that being 67454, which specifically exempts governmental uses from compliance with local land use codes and regulations while providing an alternative treatment and process through the planning board that still includes a public hearing but does not produce a binding set of comments or conditions from the planning board as part of any approval, and really, again, exempts the use from the traditional consideration in front of the planning board under site plan review processes. And specifically, this question revolved around whether charter schools, which receive public education funding and are contemplated as public schools in several locations in state statute, are in fact included within the definition of a governmental use under RSA 67454. That was really the crux of the debate, and particularly because of their role as nonprofit organizations that ultimately perform the functions of administering those public schools. In the interest of protecting both the applicants and the city's positions on this matter, and frankly, the disagreement, but a civil disagreement about this, the project was publicly noticed both for the 67454 consideration this evening and also for two traditional applications, one being a conditional use permit and the other being a site plan review application, in order to protect the rights of both parties in this, and really to provide the belt and suspenders approach that I referred to within the statement that I provided to you. In the time since that continuance, you received a legal opinion from the Commissioner of Education, Frank Edelbutt, who was very willing to have a conversation with me personally, and I want to thank him for his time and his team's time, and that analysis supports the exemption as you see in the letter that was provided to you this evening. However, just today, the Office of Corporation Counsel issued an opinion that they are not in agreement with the commissioner's team's opinion, and that's shown in the email from Deputy Corporations Counsel Celia Leonard under a separate cover that was included in the new material you received this evening. As a result, staff recommend that the board proceed with consideration of the formal applications only. We do feel, however, that these applications are ready for consideration, acceptance, and potentially action should the board feel compelled to do so, and I know the applicant is prepared to present those applications. I would say that subsequent to the consideration of those applications, I would recommend that the board either choose to table the 67454 non-binding hearing that's under discussion on your agenda, or you can simply not take action, whichever you feel more comfortable with. Again, this is done on the advice of Corporation Counsel. I want to thank the applicant and their team and all the city staff who took time to put information into this and put inputs to the commissioner's office as well, but this is ultimately the recommendation of staff this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, so really, the effect of what we're talking about here is if we hear these two cases, we come up with whatever we come up with and whatever provisions or stipulations get added to it if it goes forward from the board. Really, the question here is whether those are binding or not.
That's correct.
So I think that's really what we're talking about here. Okay.
And I would be remiss if I did not mention two things for the record. One, that there had been alternative treatments by the city planning board of applications like this, in fact, of this location in the past. And so just several years ago, it was treated as an exempt application, but we do reserve the right to provide a new opinion on it, but there's some alternative treatment in the past. The other is that one of the odd things that we are comfortable with this evening as staff, and I'll let the team speak to this, but there is potentially a need for a variance to the zoning board of adjustment for open space for this application. Typically, we would not recommend that the board take action precedent to that action for the zoning board, but in this case, based on the circumstances, we are comfortable with the board entertaining a conditional approval should you proceed to move forward in that direction, recognizing that a zoning board variance may or may not be needed at a later time.
Okay. All right. Other questions for Mr. Sullivan by the board?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. So, Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I just, I think before we, you know, take the motion on jurisdiction, I guess I just offer my two cents on this. So, I mean, having read, you know, both positions that were submitted to us in writing, I mean, I understand that the crux of the issue to be ultimately, it's not so much whether the, I think the city is not disagreeing with the determination that charter schools are governmental use necessarily, but rather saying that essentially the city has opted in its own municipal government uses to the land use code. So, for example, if there is a site plan proposal at one of the other, you know, the city public schools, those are subject to review by this planning board. That's traditionally how the city has always approached municipal uses. So I think the position the city is taking is that in order to treat the charter school in the same manner as other, you know, school facilities within the city, the appropriate approach would be to subject them to land use review, just like any other city school would be. In my view, I think the board should take a position, you know, we should, if we're going to accept jurisdiction on the review case rather than the non-binding review, I think we are then asserting a position that we do have jurisdiction to review this case substantively and not just for non-binding hearing. And so I think we should take that position as Mr. Sullivan suggested. If we do that, then I would say that we would then not take up the non-binding matter at all because we would have effectively made that decision. And in my view, I think that we, given the precedent and the position the city has taken as to other municipal uses, that we should take jurisdiction substantively over the case.
Other comments by the board? I just echo, I mean, I've been here for 10 years and heard very, a large amount of school, city school cases, and we have generally, I can't think of a city school one that we didn't, so. So I'm sort of on the same page. Is Mr. Varley, we should just hear it, make our decisions, and state what we think, and then if somebody else wants to fight about it, they can fight about it. But, you know, we at least put our opinion there, so. Okay. Any other comments? All right, so I'll take a motion as to whether, we're going to start with the conditional use permit. Is ready for us to take, is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction? This is A 22-0115. Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that as to case A 22-0115, the application is complete and the board is ready to take jurisdiction.
All right, so that motion by Mr. Varley, take jurisdiction A 22-0115. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Mr. Peterson?
I'm just thinking, I didn't receive this paperwork until tonight when it was in my packet. So do we have to make a final decision tonight, or are we just going to take jurisdiction then review the material?
Well, the material that we received tonight is really whether or not, is really just information about the view of the New Hampshire Department of Education and our Corporation Counsel about whether it's exempt or not. I guess the case materials are not new.
Was the case material reviewed on the May 19th meeting?
Not reviewed, but submitted, you know. We've had this information.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Staff?
So in your packet this evening, there is a conditional use permit staff report and a site plan?
Yep.
That was prepared today.
Okay.
So you did not have that at the last meeting. You did have some information about when it had gone before, when it was for non-binding.
Right.
Just to be clear, the staff reports.
The staff reports.
Are new today.
Yeah, okay.
But staff is comfortable with them proceeding.
Okay. So that's up to you then. The staff report portions are indeed new.
So this is all news to me, and I guess I'm just going to have to think on my feet and make a decision tonight?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Yeah, that's up to you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, so we'll take jurisdiction of A 22-0115. I'm going to go ahead and do the same because I would like to hear these together anyway. So for the site plan, case A 22-0114, somebody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that as to A 22-0114, the application is complete and the board is ready to take jurisdiction.
Okay, so you have that motion by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes? Okay, we have jurisdiction. So we have, somebody wants to present these.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Purnier. I'm an attorney with Officer Zed 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua, and here representing the charter school. Along with me is Tom Sayjack, who's our engineer for the project, and will make a presentation concerning the engineering things. I just, before I forget, I want to thank the planning staff for all their help in getting this plan here before you so we can make a decision. As the school year ends, there's a school year that's beginning, and the planning has to be done now for the school year beginning, so we don't have time. We want to let the crazy lawyers have their own fight. We, in the meantime, will proceed forward and try to show you that what we're proposing is a fair proposal and meets all the criteria of the city of Nashua regarding a site plan. We're talking here about a module that's 66 feet by 28. It's not a new school, it's not a new building, it's a module, two classrooms that we need for September, and we need to get going by July 1st. The planning staff has done everything they possibly can to help us. Just like you, they're tied up with the corporate staff of the city, and I, you know, we have to abide, we have to move on. That's the simple matter of it. We went as far as getting the commissioner, who had there, send a letter to the city stating what a charter school was, but that's neither the, we love to just continue with our plan and get this thing done. At this time, I like to just turn it over to Tom Sayjack so we can get the required material on record if I can.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Sayjack. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street here in Nashua, here tonight representing the Microsociety Academy Charter School. Joining Attorney Purnier and I here tonight via Zoom is Amy Bottomly and Barbara Halevi, who are with the charter school themselves. Matt and Jerry summed up everything for you perfectly. My job here tonight is to present the meat and potatoes, facts of the case, despite the back and forth of which approach we were going to be before you here tonight. The site plan, the plans, they haven't changed, so my presentation has been consistent all along. So we're here tonight seeking two approvals, site plan for the proposed modular classroom as well as a conditional use permit related to the project. Just like to provide a brief presentation, and then myself and the project team would be happy to answer any questions from the board or public. So the site itself is 591 West Hollis Street, map E lot 6. It's about 1.9 acres located in the R9 zone. Linda, do you have the aerial display if you don't mind bringing that up? Thank you. Site's abutted by a majority of single-family dwelling lots to the north, south, and west with an office building located just next door at 589 West Hollis Street, along with a self-storage facility to the southwest. Further along this quarter, there are a number of mixed uses as you go both east and west of the site from the highway down west towards the Hollis line. The site contains about 500 feet of frontage on West Hollis Street and dates back to the 1970s where it's been used over the years as an office and medical use specifically for Dartmouth Hitchcock or Matthew Horton before that. Currently contains a two-story, approximately 17,000 square foot building, which is currently occupied by the charter school. They've been at this location in 2014. The school is a New Hampshire chartered public school with a current enrollment of about 254 students, grades K through 8, with 26 teachers and employees, and uses 13 classrooms. Typical hours of operation, Monday through Friday, about 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. daily. There are some limited events at night, as I understand, but those are few and far between. Access to the site is provided via two curb cuts. So on the easterly side of the site, there's a shared driveway access curb cut with the 589 West Hollis Street property. These two properties are really related, they came out of the same. There's been some lot line relocations over the years, and there's certainly a number of cross-axis and utility easements that exist between the two properties in that location. The westerly access drive is roped off with the exception of entering bus traffic during those key drop-off and pickup times, and I'll talk about that in a moment. That's the driveway that's located in closer proximity to the traffic signal at Wellesley and West Hollis Street. Existing site contains 58 parking spaces and about 37% open space. Relatively flat to moderate topography, grade change to accommodate the building entrances on the north and south side, so the back of the building is one story higher than the front of the building. So Linda, if you could switch back to the other plan? Site is serviced by public sewer, water, gas, overhead, electric, and telecommunications utilities. So we're before you tonight with a relatively straightforward project, a modular classroom building, two classrooms inside along with associated site improvements. The modular classroom will be located just west of the existing building in an area where there's an existing playground area. The modular building will be one story and about 66 feet by 28 feet, as Attorney Purnier mentioned. With the new modular classroom, the school will be able to grow to a total of about 300 students and 28 employees and teachers, which is an addition of about 46 students and two employees or teachers, the existing and the proposed, it's both about 20 students per classroom. Site improvements associated with this application, as you can see on the plan, include slightly relocating the internal drive aisles to accommodate the modular building, the elimination of about 10 parking spaces on the westerly portion of the site, along with relocating that playground I spoke of to the westerly portion of the site. The project will result in about a 2% decrease in impervious area or 2% increase in open space. Coupled with two proposed leaching catch basins that are included with the design, the project will result in improvement with regards to stormwater management compared to the existing condition. We're not proposing any new lighting or landscaping as part of this project, and we will be extending a new sewer and water and underground electric and tell data services to the modular building from within the site. So really, one of the main things I wanted to talk about was related to traffic and then onsite circulation patterns. I'm assuming there's going to be questions from the board and/or abutters. If you look back at the meeting minutes from when the charter school originally came before the board in 2014 in that non-binding manner, there were some questions at that time specifically about that westerly driveway and ensuring that it's being used in a safe manner. So just providing some information for the board. So the main drop-off and pickup times occur within about a 15 to 20 minute window, 8:45 to 9:00 a.m. in the morning, and 3:40 to about 4:05 p.m. in the afternoon. Both vehicles and buses follow a clockwise circulation pattern around the existing building. So vehicles enter from the easterly shared driveway and follow the internal circulation pattern and then out, exit out from the same shared driveway. So vehicles are in and out of that shared easterly driveway, excuse me. Buses, on the other hand, do enter from that westerly driveway that's roped off otherwise, and then follow that same internal circulation pattern and leave out of the easterly driveway. So everybody leaves out of the easterly driveway. Traffic memo was prepared by the project's traffic consultant, Steve Purno. His memo dated April 28th. At the time when we submitted the impact memo, we understood we were proceeding in a non-binding fashion, so I guess we didn't absolutely need to at the time. Of course, now since we're seeking full approval, we do, but we wanted to provide that information because we thought that traffic being along West Hollis Street would be something that the board and staff would be interested in reviewing. So in that memo, just a couple of key highlights, there is a DOT traffic counter located just west of the subject site along West Hollis Street. Data information is available from 2018 to 2021, so kind of just before COVID and through COVID. Fairly consistent about 13,500 to about 15,500 vehicles per day along this stretch of West Hollis Street. They follow typical commuter periods in terms of peak hours being between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. in the mornings and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the afternoons. Based on the ITE manual trip generation analysis, the project will generate about 49 additional trips in the AM peak hour and seven trips in the PM peak hour. And the reason that the PM peak is less than the AM peak for that period is, of course, the school during their pickup period is, that window is just before or right at the beginning of that 4 to 6 peak period. Certainly, these proposed increases are well below the minimum thresholds as set forth by the city. That would require further study, and we believe that while these additional trips are measurable, they won't really cause any significant adverse impact within West Hollis Street, you know, given the significant volume of cars that currently use that corridor. And we did receive correspondence earlier this week from the city engineer and the city's traffic engineer concurring with our approach or our opinion on that matter. Aside from the traffic data itself, which contains conservative- Aside from the traffic data itself, which contains conservative assumptions from the ITE manual, we also wanted to share some of the school's data on kind of the percentage of kids, who takes the bus, who gets picked up. And so based on what they've seen the last few years, roughly about 1/3 of the students are parent pickup, and about 2/3 take the bus. So, for example, we're asking for an increase of about 46 students with the new modular classroom. So if 2/3 take the bus, that's about 31 of those 46 who will ride the existing buses, so there's no real traffic impact or generation from those students. And about 1/3 will be parent pickup, so it's about 15 of the 46, which is about one car per minute, so that's a fairly minimal impact. And even that assumption doesn't include the possibility that some of these new students will have siblings who are already in the school, so there'll be some efficiency there. So again, we're probably talking about roughly 10 to 15 new cars as a result of this new modular, and which is about one per minute. Mr. Chair, there are two letters that I would like to have incorporated by reference into the record. I'm happy to expand on either of those as needed with the board. The first is a waiver request, site plan waiver request letter dated June 1st. Two site plan waivers we are requesting. The first waiver is related to non-residential building design for the modular building. The second waiver is related to the maximum required parking space. So by code, code calculates parking by classrooms, so 15 classrooms times 2 is 30 spaces. The existing site has 58. We're coming back to 48, so we're well over that maximum. We feel the school has, you know, sufficient parking at 48, and we don't want to come down from that number to 30 spaces. So we would ask the board to consider those two waiver requests. And like I said, I'd be happy to expand on either of those if needed. The second letter, Mr. Chair, is the CUP criteria letter dated June 1st. The school is in allowed use by conditional use in the R9 zone. We've submitted this letter with a testimony that this project meets all nine CUP approval criteria, as described in the letter. So in summary, we certainly recognize that this project has followed a somewhat unique process thus far. However, we believe we have an application that's relatively straightforward in what we're proposing, and has complete and conforms with both the site plan and CUP permit requirements. The additional classroom space is going to allow for the school to accommodate the growing number of students and their families they seek to serve, and as Attorney Purnier mentioned, many of whom are counting on this project being completed for the upcoming school year. So we do have a tight window. Therefore, we're asking the board to grant approvals we are seeking here tonight. I'd just like to quickly thank staff as well for all their work in challenging a couple of weeks as we've gone through this process. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. I just have a couple of questions. Is there new playground being built that's on the far west of the site?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. And then, what's the, so you mentioned the busing. The calculations or the expectation is the existing busing capacity could carry the additional student load with no new buses at this point?
That's what I'm told, yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Other questions by the board? I'm not hearing any questions by the board.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and open up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned? Go ahead and come on up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Ernest Jedy. I'm the, I live at 15 Foxglove Court, and I'm the alderman for Ward 5, where this is located. I'm only here expressing a concern, a concern that's been expressed to me by many constituents since the time I was elected alderman. People have complained about the traffic on West Hollis Street, independent of the Microsociety Academy, traffic on West Hollis Street. There was a problem when I was first elected, and it has continued to be a worsening problem as houses to the west of this site have, you know, been built, and more people are living in that area, and more people are using West Hollis Street. But regarding the Microsociety Academy, you know, there have been, so West Hollis Street in this area has three lanes. There's one lane going east, and there's one lane going west, and in the middle, there's a turning lane. So the people, the problems that have been related to me, concern the, you know, the traffic that's going west on West Hollis Street. You know, there's that travel, the right lane is the travel lane, and then there's the turning lane in the middle. Traffic exiting from the Microsociety Academy at those peak times. I went out there this afternoon just to observe it, and from the time school let out till about 10 minutes after 4, so a period of about 30 minutes, I counted approximately 80 vehicles that left the property to exit. About 70 of them, 70 out of the 80, made a left turn. And to make a left turn, you're going across the westbound, the right lane, the through lane, and you're also going across the turning lane, and then to enter into the eastbound lane. So people that are making that left turn have to negotiate, you know, the three lanes. They have to look out for the cars coming, you know, through, going west, the cars in the turning lane, and then the cars proceeding east. So it, as I observed it, they seem to have evolved into a fairly smooth operation. I was quite impressed. But there remains, you know, the problem of, as traffic, the through traffic in the right lane, you know, a lot of people, being courteous drivers, notice the cars trying to exit from the Microsociety Academy, and lots of times, they would stop and motion for the car to proceed. We've had accidents in the past where cars proceeding in the turning lane, in the left westbound lane, can't see the car that's coming, that's exiting from Microsociety Academy, because the car that's motioning to them to go ahead is blocking their view. And so, you know, it's happened where a collision has occurred there. And today, I noticed, you know, five instances where the, where, it wasn't an accident, there was not a collision, but the traffic, in the left lane, the left turning lane, had to come to an abrupt stop to avoid a collision. So, the, you know, we've had accidents in the past, and I'm not aware of any recent ones. I think the parents have learned, you know, how to deal with this situation, but, you know, like I said, there were some instances where an accident could occur. And I'm bringing this up to you because, you know, is this an opportunity for you to review the site plan? You know, maybe ask the Microsociety Academy to look at a better way of allowing their parents to exit the property, to, you know, avoid a possible accident in the future? You know, I know no one wants that to happen, but my own idea would be to eliminate left turns. But, you know, most of the people are making left turns there. I know that everybody thinks the shortest way home is the most direct route, but, you know, would it be, you know, when you consider the time that they have to wait for an opening, you know, would it be, in the end, shorter for them? Would it take them less time to make a right turn, and then either go home that way or find a way of reversing their direction? And would it be a safer way to negotiate that? Now, I know the city, I've advocated for the city to do a traffic, a West Hollis Street traffic corridor study, and I know I advocated for that, Capital Improvements Committee, and I understand that there's a possibility that some money might be available to do that, you know, to look at West Hollis Street as a whole, but, you know, in the, you know, immediately, is there a way that we could, you know, help solve this problem, you know, without waiting for the, whether that money comes or not, and without waiting for that study? You know, is there a short-term solution that would make that, the exiting during those peak periods safer for everyone? And, thank you. I've got another meeting downstairs, but thank you very much for entertaining me.
Okay. Thanks for your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody on Zoom?
I'd like to call in favor, opposition.
Yeah, I'll let you know when I'm ready for favor. Anybody on Zoom for opposition or concern?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised, though.
Okay. Favor? Yeah, sorry. Getting your exercise.
Good evening. My name is Paula.
Can you pull that down a little bit? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I just wanted, on the record, I'm a member of the Board of Education, but I'm speaking as myself, as a resident that lives in the neighborhood there. I just want to give you a little bit of history. I live on Westborne Drive, which is on the other side of Wellesley Road. Back when I was an alderman, and we had that facility open, I think it was still Hitchcock and one of the medical, that bus entrance, myself and then alderman David Lozo, we tried to block it and not let anybody make a left turn out. Given the fact people don't read signs, and they made the left turn, and that light, people could not see, making a left turn, there was always accidents. When, I'm for the Microsociety. I have no problem with this. I think it's good that we have other options in the city for parents with students to place them where they'd like their children to be educated. My concern is that, and I'm one of the residents that called the alderman about this. I lived there. I've lived in that place for 38 years. I was one of the residents that when they built Ledgewood Hills, that traffic light went up on Wellesley Road because we knew traffic was going to get crazy. I spoke with Wayne's husband about this, and he said they're going to be doing eventually a traffic study on the corridor of West Hollis Street from Riverside to the landfill, but they don't have the money. How do you not have money to do a traffic study? After all this time, we're putting more and more foundation in the ground, and West Hollis Street has become a nightmare. I'm one of the drivers that if people are sitting there trying to get out, I'll wave them on. But if I wave them on there, I don't know if the people going east are going to stop to wave them. So I said to my alderman, we have to be creative here, I think, a little bit, in order to make this work, because West Hollis Street is a nightmare. If there's an accident there, it backs up all the way to the highway. If it's busy, backs up all the way to the highway. People come down, they try to fix the lane. When you get by 505 West Hollis Street, now you have people, used to be merging left, now they merge left to right. And everybody's merging, and they go flying down that left lane that's going to be a turning lane. So if somebody comes down that lane fast, and they're going to make that turn to go, make the left turn into Gendron, and you want people to come out that way, it's an accident waiting to happen. It is a total nightmare on West Hollis Street. So my proposal is, maybe we can have the society or the city put up temporary lights there, like they have up at Penney Chuck Junior High. When the school gets out, they can hit the light, and it stops the traffic in both directions, so the parents and the buses have a safe exit out for a change, because now it's a Russian roulette. It really is. And I don't want to see any parent get into an accident. I know what it's like, because I was in a real bad auto accident in this city over 30 years ago, and I didn't think I was going to live because somebody ran a stop sign and hit me broadside. Okay? And my daughter was 14 months old, and that was the biggest nightmare in my life. Okay? The other thing, we can keep it the way it is, and hope that nobody gets injured, and we all know that it's a mess there. So the city's aware of this. Or, if you bring up the map, and I wish that there was paperwork here today on this, but I was looking, and my husband came up with the suggestion, I guess he's in politics like me now, I don't know, he's been around me long enough for 42 years. Where you see the playground, and I'm gonna, the playground's over there, and then you see this long road that's the egress that goes behind the building, that existing two-story building that lets out on Stelo Stadium parking lot. You can make that like as an egress to exit the property and go behind the buildings. That's an emergency egress, anyway. So maybe the city can open that up just to let the buses and the cars go out at the time in the morning and in the evening, and that's the only time that is being used. I think we need to be creative here, and I wasn't too sure about the bus entrance. Is that going to stay as just a bus entrance and no exits? Because I want to make sure of that, because this is, it's really a mess on West Hollis Street. There has been really no traffic studies done over the past several years, or maybe longer, and traffic is getting worse in the city as we keep people wanting to come and live in Nashua, and we keep putting houses wherever we can find a spot to put a foundation in. And with that, you get traffic. And when you get traffic, you get a mess, because West Hollis Street really is not made to have all this traffic, because when you look at the homes going from Ledgewood Hills on up, there's no room really to take anybody's land to put another lane in each direction, to make it two lanes in each direction. We're stuck with what we have. So we need to learn to work with what we have, and we need to make West Hollis Street for these children and their families safe for when they go to school, when they enter and when they exit. So that's my proposal. Hopefully, somebody will listen to me on this. Being, again, a resident in that house for 38 years, I've seen that area grow, and it keeps growing, and we just need to be more aware of these schools.
All right.
So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or? Okay, doesn't sound like it. At this point, I give the board an opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Mr. Man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It looks like a temporary solution. You know, it's a modular building. I don't know, I guess I'm just curious about the amount of change that would need to happen in that space. It seems like you're trying to make the best you can out of a not-great situation by adding the modulators. Is that accurate, or?
We're open to all types of suggestions. However, what we're talking about here is seven and nine cars at two different times. It's not the whole situation. What I read in a report is that the city engineer, and Dan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is planning on making a study of all of West Hollis Street, down to the Hollis line and back. It has to be, something has to be done on West Hollis Street in the whole area. If you go down West Hollis Street now, and you go past Wedgewood Hill a little bit, you'll see all of the new homes that went up in that particular area. There are a lot, many more homes than the small effect of a modular classroom going up. It's, it has to be a study, I think, that that's what. It's, it has to be a study, I think, that that's what Paula said, is a study of the whole street to take care of all of the problems so that this exit works as well as the one on Wedgewood Hill. There's just not, what sometimes happens in the city of Nashua is patchwork is done. And in this particular instance, I think it has to be the whole street to take care of the traffic in that particular area. What the modular classroom is adding, and Wayne Husband has looked at it, the city engineer's looked at it, is very few cars. So it has to be an overall view of the whole, something has to be done with the whole city. If you do some patchwork, it may affect the overall proposal for the whole street. So it's, you have to do the street and come up with a proposal to take care of the major problems that exist. It's, it's become a point where it's the whole street. Because as I indicated, this, we have, we have a few cars coming up with the modular thing. What, where you have all the other cars are down the street. If you go a little bit further than Wedgewood Hill and the other side of the nursing home and so forth, you'll see all the new homes that have gone up. They're not only on West Hollis Street, they go down to the river. So there are a lot of homes. It has to be done. And I think the city engineer has got it on his list. He's aware of it.
My point is that if, there's a whole lot of other issues happening there. This is a pretty small thing and it doesn't seem like a permanent, like you're not building a building. I don't believe you own that building either. And so, you know, there's not some pressing need to create a new pathway out of there because you may not be there in three years.
I understand what you're saying. Thank you. Unfortunately, I went to law school. I didn't go to become a traffic consultant. I think there's more money in that these days.
Mr. Riley?
Thanks. I think this is probably a question for Tom or the traffic engineers here. Understanding that you didn't meet the threshold for a full traffic study and so this may not have been a component of the review you did do, I'm just curious, do you have any information about any history of traffic accidents? You know, as a result of traffic entering and exiting the site?
Yeah. That was not part of our review. It doesn't say one way or the other. I'd be happy to follow up with that information with Mr. Pernod. I also, I jotted down a couple of notes as Alderman Jettie and Ms. Johnson were speaking. Alderman Jettie's count of cars was pretty close to what we're representing in the study. Traffic studies are always a little more conservative and so you'll see those in the numbers that we presented in our, in our, in our April study in terms of how many cars are coming in and out. It's also important to say that we're, you know, we're linked with the office building next door. So it's not just our traffic. It's an office building, so they're coinciding with the same peak. I think we are kind of at the tail end of each of those peak windows on morning drop-off. We are, you know, at the beginning or the end of each of those. So we are contributing to that. I wholly agree with, in terms of the corridor study, you know, I've been involved with projects up and down this corridor. And a lot of times, traffic is a concern, but it's not really the one site or one project. You're kind of looking at the whole corridor in general and we don't want to piecemeal that together. I do think it's important to note that the school is, you know, proactively taking measures in terms of the circulation pattern. If it's out there, they're using that westerly driveway only for buses coming in because I know that was a concern when they occupied the building in 2014 about the medical office building using that freely and having folks taking left-hand turns so much closer to that light. The site distance is a little more difficult in that location, being closer to the signal. And then, of course, in terms of trying to limit, you know, so we're already limiting our left turns to the shared driveway to the east. And if we further limit there and say, nobody can take a left, well then, of course, you've got some unintended consequences. You've got folks taking U-turns where they shouldn't, turning into private property, turning around on private driveways. So, you know, I think they're doing the best they can. They have a fairly long queue inside the site to keep everybody on site and kind of tamper down that peak. So I think I just wanted to point out a couple of those things for the record.
Thank you.
Other questions by the board? Other questions by the board while we're in the hearing for staff? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on both of these. Move into the meeting. Okay. So we've got two applications in front of us. First one is conditional use permit. We need to do that one first, generally speaking. The other one is kind of, so we have to do that. So in my own opinion, seems like a reasonably well-laid out concept, reasonably small impact, definitely had obviously traffic issues on this corridor. But I'm not sure this particular applicant can really do anything about it, to be honest. You know, the, limiting the turns doesn't, I mean, they only, that's an easement area too, that whole in and out, as far as, if I'm accurate, the in and out on the One Drive, the East Drive, that's, that's an easement for both properties. Right there. So it's not even like this one applicant can make that choice to. We'd have to actually involve both, both parties here to make that happen. And any of the changes back to Stelo, that's off the other property. And so we're talking about somebody else's property again here. So generally speaking, I'm not sure those are feasible in reality, in my opinion. And I also think that a lot of the school traffic in the area is probably school traffic that's already in the area. There's probably some folks from, you know, they're probably not driving necessarily from Hudson kind of thing. They're more likely generally in the area. The buses don't seem to be increasing, so that seems like a good thing to me as well. So I don't, I don't have any issues. I welcome any comments and discussion from board members. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, you know, echo what you had said. I tend to agree in, like we discussed with the project last meeting, I view this, you know, the traffic here is incremental. And while I appreciate that there, you know, were some concerns when we last heard this years ago, you know, the school is now operating at the site apparently successfully for a number of years and people seem to be, you know, navigating the traffic situation. And so I agree. I mean, it seems like it's a larger corridor issue. And I would also be very hesitant to, even if we could, you know, the easement aside, even if we could insert, you know, a left turn only requirement there. I tend to agree with Mr. Sajak. I'd be worried about just doing that without, without much forethought. So I think, given the incremental increase in traffic, it's pretty modest and the fact that the site has apparently been operating successfully, you know, that suggests that, you know, we should leave this to the larger traffic setting.
Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I have two neighbors who both have children here who are really excited about the addition and are also, they really had no issue with traffic. It was interesting, you know, they, they had their kids in other schools before they went to the charter school and they didn't think it was any better or worse getting their kids in and out of school than it is here. So I think they're trying to make the best of a not great space for their program and it seems like a good, a good attempt.
Other comments by the board? Ms. Johnson?
Excuse me. Yeah, I'll just echo some of the other comments. I think senior traffic engineer Wayne Husband, that his assessment was this was an incremental increase as well. There are existing issues which have been spoken to and we're aware of. It is our intention to do a corridor-wide study as was described. We've had it in the capital improvement requests for the last few years. This year, though, we do think we've identified some funding, some ARPA funding that we can use for that study. So it is our intent to bring that forward soon. Get that process going, which will be beneficial to, for the whole corridor, to look at the whole corridor and see what, what options there might be to make improvements on the corridor. There was discussion about the new DPW facility. I want to be clear, there was a traffic study done for that facility. It's available on the city's website. There's a page for the DPW facility project, which you can find by browsing to the Public Works Division area. And then there's a link for the DPW facility project. So that's there. It was done in July of 2020 and it's been posted for some time for people to review should they want to see that. So that, that is available. If there was any quick fixes to these problems here, we would have made them already. We've, we've looked at this area. It is a challenging area. We'll continue to look at it, try to, you know, come up with solutions to make things better. But there are probably larger solutions, as was discussed. It may involve multiple properties or easements or whatnot. So those are certainly not things that we can do quickly or probably things that are warranted by the small-scale incremental development that we're reviewing.
Other comments? Mr. Peterson?
Yes. I live in that part of town right off of West Hollis Street. So I drive past this site regularly. And you could see the drivers are learning that when they observe a person trying to make a left turn coming out of the school parking lot, usually they give them a break and let them come out. But those people exiting the parking lot can't see the eastbound traffic coming because a lot of times their view is blocked. So it's tenuous. And as it was described, this would be just an incremental increase in the traffic problem. And one of the speakers mentioned, oh, maybe, you know, temporary light that goes on during school hours. But I would like to get an opinion from the, the traffic engineer. Suppose you just put a traffic cop out there in the morning and the afternoon because it's a minimal investment, you know? They could direct the traffic and then if it works, that's great. If it doesn't work, it's easy to undo. There isn't a big infrastructure to, to remove like you would have with, you know, lights and wiring and everything else. So, so maybe a traffic cop would, would help. But I'm not a traffic expert. I'd like to hear that from somebody who understands these problems with more insight.
Okay. We're, we're in the meeting now, so the only way we'll be able to do that is to close, is to reopen the hearing. I don't know, Dan, if you want to make a comment about, you probably have some experience.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, well, we, so this, there's a couple of things going on. One is this little, the driveway locations is within 500 feet of an existing signal. So that makes adding a temporary signal or something like that problematic. You know, the influence of the two locations, you know, is a little bit too close unless there's a way to combine them and make it all part of one bigger signal. But that's, again, that's probably a project for another day. And then in terms of police officer control during limited periods, I think it would be difficult to do, given the multiple lanes here. I wouldn't want to stand in the middle trying to track down that traffic.
We'd want that job.
Yeah. And so I envision there to at least be a couple of police officers probably. And I, we, we as a Public Works Division have had trouble getting details for our construction projects. Just the labor force issues that everybody's seeing. So I can see that as being problematic, although it would probably be helpful and certainly improve the safety of the situation.
Does that work for you, Mike, or do you need more than that or?
Well, I think Mr. Hudson, you know, offered good insight into complications. Putting in a light, you'd have to coordinate it with the other light. That seems like, that's part of a, like you said, it's another project, you know, requires a whole nother plan. So it's not feasible for us to consider at this time. And then as a human being out there directing traffic, well, again, I'd like to ask the, the traffic people what they think about that more rather than I just outright recommend it. You don't want to come up with ideas off the top of your head and think that they're solid because, you know, there's a lot of factors involved.
Does anybody sort of do that? We have to make a motion to open the hearing specifically to that? Is there, is there support to that? Anybody make that motion? Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, ma'am. I certainly would be welcome to open the hearing to have their traffic engineer speak to that. But I don't know if the traffic engineer is even present. That's my question.
Nope. They're not here, so. Not going to get that. So, okay. So that's moved to. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? We would start with a conditional use permit because we need to, we need to get through that first. Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business A22-0115, which is the conditional use permit for the site. And that would be with the finding that the, the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan under section 190-146D. And there are no stipulations.
All right. So you have that motion by Mr. Riley to approve A22-0115 with no stipulations. Do you have a second for that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. With respect to the site plan? Anybody want to make a motion on that? Mr. Riley?
I see that one too. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business A22-0114, the site plan for the site. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan under section 190-146D. And there are a total of nine stipulations. The first two of those are waiver requests. One, reading, request for a waiver from section 190-172 regarding building elevations. Now, the read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The second being a waiver request from section 190-198, requiring a maximum number of parking spaces. And that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations number three through nine shall read as written in the staff report.
Okay. We have that motion to approve with the nine stipulations as stated by Mr. Riley. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And just for, yeah, just for reference, you know, if anybody's intending to stick around for other business, item number three, as indicated before, we won't be taking that up. Okay. So moving on with the agenda. Next up, we have new business subdivision plan. This is case number A21-0013. This is Rita A. Constant Revocable Trust owner. Application and acceptance of proposed four-lot subdivision. This property is located at 77 Caldwell Road. So for the board, I just, anybody had a chance to take a look at this subdivision plan and want to make a motion as to whether this application is ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept new business project A22-0013 and a jurisdiction.
Okay. So we have that motion by Mr. Mann to accept jurisdiction of A22-0013. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay, we have jurisdiction.
For the record, my name is Richard Mann, professional engineer with Mann and Parkett Engineering, representing the owners and applicant, the Rita Constant Revocable Trust. Property of concern is 41,000 square foot lot with an existing house at the intersection of Forge Drive, Lund Road and Caldwell Road in the R9 and RB zone, also known as Lot 35, Sheet 105. The project consists of a subdivision into four lots, including the existing house. Each of the streets are in part of a five-year moratorium. So construction on some of these lots can occur for years and the other ones for a couple of years. Each of the streets are in part of a five-year moratorium. Sidewalks exist except for a portion of Caldwell Road. Sidewalks exist except for a portion of Caldwell Road, which is required to be installed as part of this project. The topography across these lots is gentle and sloped towards Lund Road. Drainage is proposed to be handled by leaching catch spaces, one per each of the lots has runoff is minimal. Two waivers are requested, existing conditions within 1,000 feet, and overhead utilities versus underground, we propose overhead. With regard to the staff recommendations, I generally agree, but I would point out with regard to item four, that Mandola, in his email of 428, comments have been addressed by Mann and Parkett in response letter 35222. For item five, Repaglia for the Fire Department's comments having responded to Inspector Repaglia's email dated 210, 22 states that the National Fire Marshal has no further comments. So item four and five have been responded to. That concludes my presentation.
So just to clarify, Scott, do we have the 210 fire response? Do you think that makes sense, take that one off?
I believe we do.
Yeah, okay, so we could take that one off. And then I don't know about the letters for responses to engineering comments. Dan, has you seen that?
I'll double check while we're meeting.
While we're talking, okay. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant regarding this subdivision plan? I don't know if you sound like it. Thank you, Mr. Mann. We'll check on the stipulation anyway. So at this point, I'll go ahead while we're in the hearing here and open up to the public. Is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody online on Zoom? Again, wishing to speak in opposition or concern?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the point? Okay, it looks like we have anybody. Thoughts on the stipulation?
Well, not yet, but I had some questions. And the staff report speaks to sidewalks.
Yep.
Can we get clarification on where sidewalks are going to be constructed?
In terms of Caldwell Road, there is no sidewalk. There is sidewalk on the main road, Lund Road as they, and there's a small sidewalk on the, what is that, Armory Street? Or, yeah, not Armory Street, but Forge, Forge Street, Ford Road.
Yep.
Yeah.
And is the applicant proposing to put a sidewalk on Caldwell?
I think you said that.
I think I heard you say that.
On the plan, yes.
Yes. So it looks like we're going to have them all the way.
Just for the record, I want to note that Lund Road, I believe, is in the moratorium. I'm sure Mr. Mandola mentioned it, but.
Yep, he did.
No utility work can occur there until the board from the works approval for a moratorium waiver.
Right.
Should they choose to grant one?
Yep. I think the applicant mentioned that, too.
And then there was some discussion in the staff report about single-family homes or duplexes. Can we get clarification on what's proposed?
It's actually, the amended staff report kind of splits down what they can build or cannot build in terms of the two lots in the R9 zone are approved for two single-family homes. Remaining two lots have the option of building two duplexes in the split-zone area because the RV portion of each lot is larger than the R9 portion. Lot 35 meets the criteria for a duplex, which is 12,000 square feet, whereas Lot 167 does not, so they would have to come back for a condition of use permit if they wanted to put a duplex on the property. So, single-family only up to, until the CUP.
Yep.
I can't hear him back there. I can't hear him up here either.
Yeah, we have a new staff report that kind of indicates that 165 and 166 are approved for single-family homes. That's clear, right?
All the empty lots are single-family. The existing house could be converted to two-family, period.
Okay.
There you go.
I don't, I had a hard time with that.
Yep. Well, no, no, we were just trying to make sure it was correct, that's all. I know, zoning was asking for that info.
Yeah, currently, existing houses are remaining, but that would happen through a building permit process.
Right.
Later.
Okay. So the only other question I have is just whether or not the Mandola letter of April 22nd, do we have a response from Mandola that's.
I have, let's see, I have an April 28th letter. Does that look referenced?
Yeah, but I think.
I think we should stick with that. I don't find, I don't find any more recent correspondence. I do see a submittal, which I'm not sure. Mr. Mandola may have replied to it, no, but I can't find it in the folder.
Well, we can leave it in and.
Yeah, we can clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing? Don't hear any? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing here, so. So going into meeting here, seems pretty straightforward, four-lot subdivision. We clarified, we do not need stipulation number five in the amended staff report. Remember, we have one that's stated 531 here, amended. Any other comments by anybody, questions? Mr. Peterson?
Question? So in the stipulations, number five, from the Fire Department, you're saying we don't need that?
No, it sounds like from staff, they said that's been, the Fire Department has, there's been a, the applicant has submitted a response, and Fire has approved and said no further comments.
Correct, or, I mean, you could always leave that in there and.
So that'll be struck out of the stipulations?
Either one.
Because the date is not, doesn't match, that's why I'm just.
Yeah, February 8th, 2022 is what I have on order. I mean, in terms of, I know additional information had come in and.
The email from the Fire Department is February 10th, two days later. And now it says no further comments? Yeah, totally good, okay. Other, Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I drove by the site and it's really fitting to the neighborhood already, the density. The utilities are already above ground as well, so it's a great plan.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Hudson?
Just to correct one of my earlier statements or expand upon it, the other two roads are also a moratorium.
Right.
So all the roads abutting this development are moratorium. Any cuts will require the BPW approval for a waiver.
Got it. Okay. Hearing no more comments, Mr. Mann, want to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to approve new business project A-22-0013 subdivision plan. Approving, finding determining that it meets requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-138G. Do we want to keep the stipulation five or just?
It doesn't sound like we need it, so I can take it out.
Okay, so with seven stipulations, number one shall read the request for a waiver of Section 190-282B9 is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, the request for a waiver of NRO Section 190-190-221C is granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Three and four as written, striking number five, and six through eight as written.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Mann to approve A-22-0013 with the seven stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have, it looks like several cases related to 145 Temple. I'm going to assume, maybe I'll ask this of staff, it's probably best to hear the site plans in whole with all of them so that we can get a picture of the entire.
Right, there's a subdivision, and then the three site plans are for the.
They're all contiguous.
They're all together, but then both separately on each of them.
Okay, yeah, but they are contiguous, so I get, yeah, okay. So I'm going to hear these together. So I'm going to start with first hearing new business subdivision plan. This is case number A-21-0299. This is 145 Temple Street LLC owner, Green Ridge LLC applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed three-lot subdivision. This is located at 145 through 149 Temple Street. Again, we're going to hear this in conjunction with case number A-21-0300, which is same owner applicant, but an application of a proposed site plan to show a four-bay garage office and storage. And then case number A-21-0301, same owner, same applicant. This one being an application and acceptance of proposed site plan to add asphalt manufacturing. And then along with case number A-21-0302, same owner, same applicant, this being an application and acceptance of proposed site plan to add a proposed office use. So I'm going to start with the board with case number A-21-0299, the subdivision plan. Anybody a chance to take a look at this? Want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, as to A-21-0299, the subdivision plan for 145 Temple Street LLC, I would make the motion if the application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of A-21-0299. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so that's in jurisdiction. Regarding A-21-0300 site plan, Mr. Riley?
Mr. Chair, I would propose, given that there's three site plans that are all related to the same site, I would make a motion as to all three.
Okay.
So that motion would be as to site plan cases A-21-0300, A-21-0301, and A-21-0302, again, all relating to 145 Temple Street LLC, that those applications are complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Okay, so we have that motion to take these three cases into jurisdiction as well. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Mann. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, opposed? None? All right, so we have those four items in jurisdiction, and yeah, we'll hear them all together and then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the fact that we'll do that because the comments will be on all four of them, since it's one piece of land that's being subdivided and so forth. For the record, my name is Gerald Pruner. I'm an attorney at 20 Fallow Square, and I'm here representing the applicant this evening. Along with me is project engineer Richard Mannard, traffic consultant Jason Plut, and the owner of property, Richard DeFelice. As to the background, could we get?
Which one do you want? This is the subdivision?
Why don't we start with the subdivision plan? Is that the one?
That's it.
The plants all mesh into each other, so one or two of them will take care of all four of them. This piece of property has been in Nashra for a long piece, a long time. Those of us that have been around for a while remember the Shagden Lumber Company and was involved for many years. There was also, it's abutted on one side by the railroad, Mann and the railroad, a, there's a landscaping business, which used to be Ready Mix, and then this Temple Street, which comes down to, on the westerly side of the project. What we have before you this evening is a subdivision plan, which is to subdivide this piece of property into three pieces, and we have three site plans that could be considered tonight regarding this piece of property. As to all of the pieces of property, we have met with the zoning administrator who has approved the plan as being within the zoning of the city of Nashra. We have met with the Health Department, who has approved the plan. We've met with the Fire Department, who's approved the plan, and we have met with the Traffic Department, who has approved the plan. He has requested that a contribution of 7,400 be made for traffic improvements that may be made at a later date by the city, which we agree to make. We agree to make traffic improvements. And as the engineering department has requested, our engineer to make certain improvements on the plan, and that has been done, and we're willing to comply with the city engineer's letter of April 29, 2022. The site is serviced by all utilities that are available right to the site. Let me also say that there are recommendations on four of the issues that are before you this evening, and we recommend, we are in agreement with the recommendations that the staff made on all of those requests. On the subdivision plan, there are two buildings that are going to be raised, one in the middle and one as you come in on the left off of Temple Street. The other buildings stay, and they, as a result, are part of the site plan because of the subdivision for all those three lots. Did you put up one site plan?
This is for 145.
This site plan indicates where the two buildings that are going to be removed. It indicates in the middle where the asphalt plant, the new asphalt plant, will be placed. Also, the traffic coming in from Temple Street is a runway. It goes up around and then out through an easement onto Commercial Street. There will be a fence along the railroad. It's along city property. Requested a fence to be put along there. You see it along the railroad property, and it will be landscaping that will be done in cooperation with the city staff. They've requested that they be involved, and we have no problem, and that is one of the recommendations that they have put, and we have no problem with that recommendation. There is a access easement over all three properties that will be placed on record in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, giving access to all three properties to access in and out of the area as well as the parking that is required. The building coming in from Temple Street on the right is an office building, is a storage building, and it also does repair work. As you come in from Temple Street, the building on the left, the first one is going to be removed, it's going to be razed, and then there's a second building, that is a storage building. All buildings have required parking. There are a couple of waivers, and on those waivers, I would like to turn it over to our engineer, Mr. Mannard, to talk about. I believe we've given the staff copies for everyone of the operation of the asphalt plant, and I've been told that that has been given to you. If you have any questions about, we will be glad to answer those. Thank you. And I will, as soon as Mr. Mannard's finished, I'll be glad to answer any questions as well as our people that are here this evening.
Okay, thanks.
The waivers requested are one for overhead utilities, although utilities are there to all the buildings, there may be one improvement because the. because the asphalt plant runs on four eighty volt and maybe some, a new overhead line. But everything else is already servicing the buildings and they're all overhead. So there's a waiver for that. The other item is for facilities within a thousand feet of the site. This site is pretty much contained in itself, so that waiver is for the items within a thousand feet. I don't know what else I can tell you about the plan. Jerry, pretty much covered it. Thank you.
I will go ahead and open to the board. Any questions for the applicant on any of these particular applications? Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you just describe it? I understand that there's, we've got somewhere in our packet some sort of description of the operation of the asphalt manufacturing facility itself. But could you just describe briefly what that will look like? In particular, I noticed, you know, there were comments, for example, in Joe Mandola's letter about how were, you know, odors and fumes going to be mitigated? So could you just speak to sort of what the operation looks like?
Well, there should be a letter in there explaining all of that stuff. There's a full odor control facility provided with this. There should be no odors. This is, the asphalt facility is basically enclosed on the canvas area and it has treatment. I'm not sure what else I can tell you. Other than that's, there should be no odors. He's talking about odors several feet away. We sent you pictures of plants in Westford and in Watertown, right in the middle of developed areas. Plus, we need an air pool, an air, I don't mean an air, an air emissions permit from the state. And we went through quite a bit of discussion, and not me personally, but Attorney Pruner and our applicant, Mr. D. Felice, with the health department and with the fire department. Both of those agencies were concerned about odors and they came away satisfied and signed off on what we proposed and what we're going to show there. So between what we're proposing and the state air resources permit, we have to get, there should be no odors.
Ms. Harper?
I have some more questions about the plant and I'm not sure you're the right person to answer them. But I did go down to Watertown to look at the plant down there. So how does this plant compare in size to the one in Watertown?
It's a little, it's a little bit smaller, but it's essentially the same from a planning standpoint.
I think that in answering your questions, I beg, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up the applicant. About that, Adam. I'd like to bring up the applicant who is building the plant. So you get it right from what I would say is the horse's mouth, if I could.
That would be great.
Okay, if you don't mind, if I could.
Good evening and thank you for your time.
You can lift that mic up a little bit. You can take it out if you want to.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay? So I'm Rick D. Felice and I am the applicant. And I live at Crestwood Lane in Nashua. But I'm the owner of the property, so I'm happy to answer any questions that I can about the plant. So please.
Great, I just had a couple more.
Sure.
Is the plant going to be used exclusively for Newport? Or is it going to be open for other companies to come get asphalt?
So it would be open for general business, yes.
It would be, okay. And are there, I don't know if you know, but are there any other plants within, you know, twenty-five mile radius of this proposed plant?
Yes.
I can't think of any, that's why I'm asking.
Sure, sure. So there is, there is one plant on Amherst Street near Frederick's. Towards that, you know where Frederick's is? Main Street, everyone knows Frederick's, right? There is one in Hudson on one oh two, hanging, you know, hanging down. I'm sorry, it's maybe one eleven, one oh two. No, one eleven, one eleven.
Yeah, okay.
And then there would be, you know, hopefully the one in Nashua, ours. And then I also own one in Westford, Massachusetts as well. And I heard, you had asked a question about the comparison.
Yes, I was curious because I saw the plant.
So our plant, and I heard something about odor and Richard did, he did a great job trying to explain that. But our plant would be state of the art and it has to meet, obviously, state of New Hampshire, clean air qualifications to even obtain that permit. In Westford, we have what is known as probably one of, or if not, the cleanest air permit in the state of Massachusetts and maybe in the United States. And we have run that plant for three years and with total, we've passed all DEP testing, local Board of Health testing. We just went through a, you know, they had a walkthrough the other day, standard walkthrough when they come in. We have an open door policy and we've done very well with, you know, within our permit, you know, qualifications and anything they've asked and or needed, wanted, we've done. To get to the odor, so what we have is a loadout system. We have two silos. And what happens is the, it's basically stone sand that's in the middle of asphalt. And that all gets heated, maybe just mixed, and it gets put into a silo. And once it gets put into a silo, we call that the loadout area. And it's, I think you have pictures, if I'm not mistaken. But essentially trucks will pull in and it's almost like a car wash, an automatic car wash. Pull in, door comes down, they get loaded. And then there's what we call a blue smoke system. And any, anything, you know, from loading it, it's obviously hot. Those, that steam and any emissions that are in there will go through what they call a blue smoke system and it will get through that. And it's probably a ten or fifteen second delay for the time the plant gets loaded. Plant, you know, the silo loads a truck. The front door is closed and it gets sucked up and. Automatically, you know, the door will open and truck will exit. I believe that's the only one in the state of Massachusetts that actually is in operation. And I plan to bring that here as well.
When you, when you do that assessment of emissions and smell, are the vehicles that are, large trucks that are coming in and going, are they part of that study? Or is that, it's just the plant itself that you're speaking?
Yeah, so it's not really a test. What it can tell you is we've been three years there and I work on that plant all the time. And I, I'm not going to say it's odorless. What I'm going to tell you though is that, I'm going to say. What happens when the truck leaves when dead and loaded? They all have tarps, electric tarps. And they load, you know, top goes on in truck, obviously. And it leaves the property. It's not offensive. I mean, we've done well there and I don't, I don't think we have a problem in Nashua at all, to be honest. You know, we do use a product called Echosorb that goes into the liquid asphalt. It's put into the, you know, the tent and it is biodegradable. It is a retardant of any odor. It comes in different kinds of orange, it comes in different section, whatever. And. For real. And we, that's part of our permit there and. You know, we plan to use it with, over there in Nashua as well.
Thank you. What is the relationship between the dividing of the lot into three and this? Is it, is it companies that are using the space or?
It's just, it's kind of a coagulation of, you know, you're going to come in, you're going to enter on Temple and then you're going to go through, say, lot one, onto lot two. We get loaded and you exit, say, on lot three. So I believe that is why, you know, for the subdivision need. But. But the lots themselves, I mean, they're all existing. We live there now. I have my maintenance facility. We have, you know, tractor trailers and loaders and pavers, roads and everything. Live there. And then I have, so I have my, my home office and then we have the maintenance facility. As you know, it's the old Shagden Lumber Building. What we did was we took that, we remodeled all the inside and, you know, we, we created the garage, which used to be a lumber storage facility. We created a state of the art garage in there. So we've been living there for quite a while. It's just happened, it's going well. Part of the reason I bought that land is because it, you know, was a permitted use for an asphalt plant. And someday I had hoped to, you know, be in front of you and try to, try to do what I would like to do. That's part of it.
Mr. Peterson?
Can you describe on a regular business day, the types of trucks that will be coming through and about how many?
Sure. So if we're, you know, if we're running six to six, usually what happens is. The first load we go, first loads, probably six AM, six thirty, trucks get loaded and they leave. And normally you're going to see that first activity between six AM and five in the morning. And then those trucks have left, right? So they're on their way to the jobs. They got, they have to get put down. And you're probably, you know, and then it gets sporadic for a few hours because those trucks are out working, right? And then they'll come back, save for this. And again, sporadically, because what happens is when those trucks leave, they don't, don't get laid down at the same time, right? So they're on a job, they're sitting, they're waiting. You may have a ten to twenty minute, ten fifteen minute gap between those trucks leaving their job. So it's really kind of, once you get out in the morning, it's kind of sporadic as they come back. And then you're going to have your, you know, your FOV customers, freight on board, come through during the day. You know, who knows, you know, that could be at high every ten minutes, five minutes, every hour. Hard to say because you don't know, right?
So these are typically dump trucks?
Yes, they are. The tri-axle, well, it could be six wheel size, could be tri-axle, yes.
And about how many trucks per day do you think would come to your site?
Yep, so I'm thinking you're probably going to see a hundred to a hundred and fifty over, say, a nine or ten hour period. Eight to ten hours, call it that.
So that would really change the character on Temple Street, I would think. Have a hundred trucks coming, hundred dump trucks coming through every day.
So I would respectfully disagree. And I would because currently I'm running my maintenance facility now and we have low beds and we have dump trucks coming and going off of my property today, on a daily basis. But not only with that, next to me, we have a recycling and a gravel and a loom facility that currently runs daily with trucks in and out. I mean, they're right next to me. And that's the site of the old Bissonette Sand and Gravel. And they used to do about a thousand yards of concrete a day, which would probably, would back then have produced probably two to three hundred trucks a day in and out. And that, they're right on Commercial Street. That's the site of the recycling yard now. That used to be old Bissonette Sand and Gravel.
So you're saying there's a history of where there used to be plenty of trucks in the past?
Absolutely, positively, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few questions. The batch plant has a control facility, right? Is it like a smaller building?
Yeah.
Would that have bathroom facilities in it?
It would not, no.
Okay. And the building that's being raised, does that have any bathroom facilities or anything in it?
They do.
They do?
Yes. One does, one doesn't. Right. So there's two buildings, yes.
Yeah, but the one that'll be raised did?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense.
So there's two buildings, right? So you drive in, first building on the left is coming down. You call it, you call it raised, it confuses me too.
Sorry.
It's coming down. That has, that has bathroom facility, yes. And then when you go around, then there's a big, what you look like, it's, you know, it's like, it used to be an old, well, not old, but. It was, well, a sewer, right? That building is coming down and that's the site of where the plant.
And that didn't have bathroom facilities?
It does not, no.
Because there's engineering testimony, there's no sewer service shown on the plan. They say they don't know where it is and there was discussion about what water use would be needed for the plant. So I'm just trying to clarify a few of these things that, for the record. The staff report mentions encroachments in the railroad right of way. The plan shows a little bit of pavement encroaching in the right of way, but it appears from city GIS that the encroachment is pretty significant in terms of materials, vehicles, storage within the railroad right of way. I believe it's, I believe it's appropriate to make that a condition if it's not already proposed to be that all encroachments be removed from the railroad, former railroad right of way, city property, I should say.
There was a stipulation.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted the board to be, to make, to be known, to be known. It's much more significant than what the plan shows. So it's not necessarily a minor thing. And there is testimony about a, a part of the plan, it's in some defense. Who will maintain the plantings? Has that been discussed in the future?
On their property?
They seem to be right on the property line as proposed. I'm just curious what the ownership maintenance responsibilities are intended to be.
I believe the applicant is willing to do that.
Okay, excellent.
Town hasn't told me yet what, the city hasn't told me what they want yet, but I'm sure we can maintain.
For materials, okay, good. I think that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a conversation with the butters on Murray Court about the project?
I have not. Have I had a conversation? No, I have not. I don't even know who they are.
There's a lot of residential right there.
I understand that. I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Murray Court, it's on your plan. It would be the west, I believe, west side of the property. There's three residential buildings there, apartment style buildings.
No, I haven't, I have not, no. No, I haven't. Maggie, when you said you went to Watertown, I actually grew up right near that plant. Probably within a quarter of a mile.
I did have one more question about the plant. Is, is that an older plant? How does that equipment compare to the equipment that you're purchasing? Because it was kind of loud, it had a lot of pulleys.
Yeah, yeah. So the plant that we're going to put in is brand new, obviously, state of the art. We can have this conversation from this distance at this level with my plant. So there is, that's not, it's a non-issue. It's an absolute non-issue. That plant, I know that, I'm going to date myself, but I was seven years old when I was going into that plant. And that's over fifty years ago, so I know that's been there forever and ever, you know? But I will say, and, you know, to talk about it just for a moment, that plant, north side, you see all the development that's going on around it. And in the packet, you'll see what's actually being proposed, hotels and, you know, other things. So that has not, that has not been a deterrent for that property around that plant, has not.
Thank you.
Any questions by the board? I'm not hearing any questions by the board at this time, so I think what I'll do is I'll. Yep, leave it up there.
You will get, give it a song.
So what I'll do right now is go ahead and I'm going to open up to, thanks, to some of the public testimony. If there's some folks here, I'm going to start with the folks that are here in the audience directly. If anybody wishes to speak in opposition or concerned, have a question in the plan, please go ahead and come forward to the microphone. Your name and address for record. Do not see anybody here. I'm going to go ahead and open to Zoom. And Leonard, could you let me know if somebody?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Somebody just did.
Oh, wait, we do have one person.
Okay, can you just announce who they are?
My phone.
Do we have somebody on Zoom that wants to make a comment or ask a question? Go ahead and state your name.
Yes, you do. My name is Michael Faber of Ten East Pearl Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I am the owner of one ten East College Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, also known as the Henry Hanger Building.
Okay.
So I am speaking in opposition to this proposal to build an asphalt plant at one forty-five, one forty-nine Temple Street. I do have many objections to this proposal and I'll do my best to try to keep everything organized and concise here, you know, for everyone at the board. So objection number one is the odor. Although the applicant claims they have a solution for the odor with chemical additives or blue smoke control, I don't believe this will be sufficient. Even stated a moment ago, there is an odor present with the manufac- Even stated a moment ago, there is an odor present with the manufacturing of asphalt. Based on my research of several mitigation companies such as Armaz and Ecozorb, one that he mentioned he uses, none of them claim that they offer 100% odor mitigation, and there lies the issue. My building is literally 30 yards away from where this proposed asphalt plant will be or hopefully not be built, and there will be essentially 100 residential tenants that will be living right next to that asphalt plant. While living there, they'll be subjected to a wide range of hazardous chemicals such as arsenic, benzene, formaldehyde, and cadmium, all of which can cause cancer, central nervous system problems, liver damage, respiratory problems, and skin irritation. So let's say in a great world, this odor mitigation product eliminated 90% of those chemical odors. The residents, remember, just 30 yards away, would be hit with a cocktail of chemical vapor daily. Not sure about you, but I wouldn't want to be exposed to even 1% of those lethal substances. The proposed plant is just too close to residential housing to be considered safe. So my second objection would be the operational impact to the area. The proposed product will flood the already congested streets of this part of town with large commercial grade dump trucks. Keep in mind, it's not just trucks going to pick asphalt up, but also trucks delivering the aggregate used to make it. Then there's the handling of the aggregate. Trucks will be dumping the material daily, loaders will be relocating it, and this will create a large amount of dust, but even the slightest wind, it would go directly into the residence unit. It also seems that the lot is constrained to handle an aggregate storage, so I'm not sure what the solution to that is, or if that would involve more routine trucking and smaller dumps on a daily basis. Noise is another operational impact that would disturb the surrounding area significantly with the operation of heavy equipment and loud dump trucks from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, light clockwork, day in, day out, again exposed to those toxic fumes. The residents would lose their right of quiet and enjoyment. Objection number three, changing the characteristic of the neighborhood. The area is predominantly residential and light industrial comprised of light manufacturing, supply houses, and storage in the area, but there is no heavy industrial located in the vicinity. The asphalt plant is classified as a heavy industrial use, and that would not be appropriate for this location and ultimately change the character of the neighborhood for the worse, having a major impact on surrounding values and the quality of life. Objection number four, inconsistent with other asphalt plants. Based on my research of other asphalt plants in the area, such as Continentals, Brock's, even the applicant's asphalt plant located in Westford, these plants are all set on very large lots and more capable of handling a heavy industrial application. None of these plants are placed as close to residential livings as the one proposed. Remember, 30 yards away, you've got 100 residential citizens of Nashua living next to a toxic asphalt plant. Upon research of the Watertown plant, it is not surrounded by residential housing and would not be comparable to the hundreds and hundreds of residents that are going to be living in that area and that currently occupy that area. I would just stress to the board to take another look at some of these asphalt plants such as Continental, Brock's, and the applicant's plant in Westford. I personally visited it, great plant, great location for it, but it's not smack dab or 30 yards away from a residential housing structure. Objection number five, the TOD overlay. I think we all can agree that the TOD overlay was created to give the planning board more flexibility on approving or denying projects that are either consistent with the city's master plan or outside the scope of it. The city has clearly headed in the direction of revitalizing the TOD districts, and that is predicated around providing more housing. This project would be a clear violation of the city's master plan. Not only that, it would also hinder other projects from being developed in the area as there is a very, and I mean very large stigma of having residential housing near a toxic asphalt plant, of which the city has approved our unit or 88 residential multifamily units, and they also approved another 167 unit project across the street on Temple as well. As the planning board is already aware, you guys had approved our 88 unit project. These projects passed with kind of great enthusiasm as housing is desperately needed in Nashua, and I believe in the city's master plan and understand the housing crisis it faces. I am doing my small part to solve this issue and have invested a ton of time and money into trying to bring housing in the area. The city has also invested considerable sums of money getting the railway walking path approved, a project that would be running right next to an asphalt plant, so you not only have citizens living in a community breathing in toxic vapors daily, but all of those trying to participate on a nice walkway that connects Nashua's trail system would also have to endure and suffer the obnoxious odors of an asphalt plant. So I feel that all of the progress that the city has made, they are now starting to regress with that if they do approve a plan like this. In closing, I think the idea of a proposed asphalt plant is completely against what Nashua master plan has set forth, and the city has been tirelessly been trying to accomplish through the TOD ordinance. In addition to that, I feel this decision will be detrimental to the surrounding property values, residents' quality of life, and the future expansion of the area. The TOD ordinance gives the board the power to deny this project, and that's exactly what you should do. Nashua does not need an asphalt plant dropped in the middle of a high density residential zone. I hope the board deeply considers the direct and indirect impact this will have if it gets approved. There's no turning back, and the landscape in Nashua will forever be changed for the worse. I yield back my time, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Let me just get through the public stuff first. Anybody on Zoom willing to speak in favor of the plan, wishing to?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. Okay, at that time I'll close the public session part, and yeah, at this point I'd give the applicant an opportunity to rebut the public testimony or...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier, an attorney representing the applicant. Let me say, first of all, this area is properly zoned. You heard Mr. DeFalese say that he bought the property because he intended to do this in the future and checked it out to see that he had the right to do this asphalt plant. So he has the right to use his property for its property zone. This wild thing about the master plan has no effect upon this property. The master plan is not zoning, and I don't even, and I don't believe, I haven't had the chance to check it, but I don't think it's even been considered and accepted by the Board of Aldland. But in any case, it's irrelevant, this area is properly zoned. As far as odor is concerned, we knew that these questions would come up, so we made sure that we went to the proper people to make sure that they were satisfied with what we did. We went to the Board of Health, we talked to them, they were satisfied that we were taking care of any odor problems on the thing. If he had, if he had any evidence, he should have submitted it to you. Some of the statements that he's making are not true and may subject him to a lawsuit. But in any case, that's not, the relevant part is tonight, this piece of property that's properly zoned, we've shown that we've met all of, with the departments of the city of Nashua, they have control over this piece of property, and they have been satisfied. Besides that, his property is not in a butter to this piece of property. In this 30 yards, it's much further than that. As our measurements were, because we anticipated this, that's over 400 feet away. If the board has any questions, I just get a little bit upset when people come in and make wild accusations, not backing it up with anything. Thank you.
Okay. The board have any, at this point, further questions for the applicant or staff or in the hearing? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yeah.
I noticed on the website for the company that you noted the process that, the legal and permitting process for the plant in Massachusetts took over 10 years. I'm wondering what some of the issues might have been, is it something similar to this?
Just remember to state your name and address, just so they get...
Rick DeFalese, 145 Temple Street. The biggest issue was we were not permitted use on the land until we obtained the permit. The land I currently own at 145, we are zoned and we are permitted use by right. That was the beginning of it. That's the major difference. Everything that you heard this gentleman speak to, we dealt with in Westford. It was a 10-year battle, but it was a one-year battle in the town of Westford, and then we went to Land Court in Massachusetts, and every possible test that we were asked to do, we passed with flying colors and it was peer reviewed by the town of Westford. Okay. And unfortunately, a lot of the allegations I'm hearing tonight are totally untrue and unfounded, and I do take exception to that, and it bothers me, because what I'm hearing is not true. You could not put this plant in the state of New Hampshire if you didn't have the right permit. Can't be done. It couldn't be done in Massachusetts. And I walked away with the cleanest permit in the history of the state of Massachusetts. I know what it is to work within being a good neighbor. We've been three years in operation, and we've been a real good neighbor in Westford, we have not had any problems. And I, please.
If I may, I go by your property every day.
Yes. Which one? Westford or Nashua?
No, no, the one here in Nashua.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, and I think it's an amazing operation, it's very discreet, you know, you wouldn't even know it's a construction company most of the time, there's very little traffic, it seems very quiet. But it really is perplexing to me, why would you put an asphalt where there's no access to highways? I mean, you're going to be on Temple Street, they just put the new dying expansion in, so all the traffic that was going down Main Street, as you know, shifts over to Temple Street because people are trying to avoid Main Street. The bridge to Hudson is a nightmare. You have to go out through Main Street or Hudson. What is the...
Why not?
For all the reasons I just stated?
It's a permitted use, it's, I'm in the business. Bissonette Sand and Gravel had concrete for god knows, 30, 40, 50 years, why not? I mean, that's what we do, that's the business I'm in, that's why I bought my land, and it's an inner-city plant, it's different than the one in Westford. The gentleman spoke about plants being on multiple acres, that in fact is true. But the facility that we're putting in Nashua is a much smaller facility than what's in Westford, capacities are smaller, it's just a whole, it's a much smaller operation. It's an inner-city plant, much like Watertown, no different, except it's state of the art. It serves a different, a bit of a different purpose, but it's a smaller operation.
Mr. Marley?
Yeah, just a question, the gentleman who spoke to you about it at 110 Hollis Street, he indicated or suggested that the proposed use here would be much closer in proximity to residential uses than the Westford side or the Watertown site. Can you just speak to, I guess in particular to the Westford site, since that's yours? What is the proximity to residential uses there?
In Westford?
Yeah.
We actually have office, office building that's probably, I don't know, maybe 800,000 feet away. As far as Watertown, again, not true. There are residential units right around Watertown. Maggie has seen that, and there's, there's a lot of businesses, commercial and otherwise, right around the hotels, et cetera. I'm sorry, what were you asking about the neighbors?
Yeah, no, I just, that's essentially what I was asking. And so Westford, you mentioned, there's an office building, or, because I just, I don't have, you know, I think the pictures look like they're all from Watertown. Is Westford, are there residential use, you know, whether it's apartments or single-family homes that are close in proximity to that?
I think, yeah, there are. You go out the door, Route 40, there are units, you know, there's homes on Route 40, yes. Across the way, again, depending on which angle you take from the plant, but there are offices, there's contractors yard with offices there.
Other questions by the board? From the applicant? Or in the hearing?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Hurst.
Curious, how many, bring the aggregate in, they're coming by truck obviously to get in there. How many trucks a day are going to come in, be coming in with the aggregate because you're going to put a throughput there, I imagine?
I'm sorry?
How many trucks a day, I would imagine you'll put a throughput of materials?
So that would happen over probably a six-day period, and it really is going to depend on what we're able to sell and not sell. You know, an average could be 30 to 50 trucks a day over an eight, nine-hour period.
That's in addition to the, your customer traffic?
It would be kind of pot off. It's all encompassing that 100, 150.
I see. Any count of how many trucks a day are using that road right now?
My traffic person is here and can give you an idea on the counts or whatnot. I mean, we have constant activity, I know there's a lot of activity next door, which, again, the gentleman said everything is, you know, light. Well, what's going on next door to me is not light. It's a recycling yard that sells gravel, loom, and everything else, so that's not quite accurate either. Yeah. Yes.
I'm curious about the master plan. It has been vetted and approved, and it's very clear about what they, the city has intended to do in that area. Was that a part of your discussion? Was that part of what you took in as you were trying to develop this space?
With who and when?
The Imagine Nashua, the official city of Nashua master plan?
Right, what about it?
So you're not, you're as unfamiliar with it as your previous lawyer was? I mean, I just think...
Well, I understand this, I understand that the gentleman bought the Henry Hanger building and they want to put houses there. Fine, I appreciate that and God bless, and I hope he does very well with it. But I know what surrounds me, and I've been there for a number of years, and other than the Henry Hanger, which is not developed yet, seems to be in the process at some point, nothing's changed. So I understand, I appreciate the master plan, I know where I am, I see what I see, and to me, it doesn't look like you're going to have any major, you know, play in new housing in that general area aside from where this gentleman is doing his development.
And Murray Court, which is a budding your property.
You keep mentioning, I don't, I don't, I don't know much about it, I see what I see.
There's three buildings and apartments. There's three apartment buildings that budding your property.
Yeah, I understand, I get that, but I'm not sure, what are you asking me? What do you ask, should I change my business because there's a master plan that I don't see developing around me other than...
Typically, when developers are bringing a new project in, one of the ways that we interact with that is what interactions have they had with the budding properties? And I was ready for you to say that, you know, you've talked with them, you know the owners, you know the people, and you understand any of the, it's just interesting that you don't. That's up to you.
Well, I can say this to you, I didn't do that when I bought that land, I didn't do it when I put my maintenance facility there, I didn't do it when I put my office, home office there. So I'm not quite sure, no, I didn't, I don't know why I would.
Truth.
I mean, what I did was I bought the land for the zoning, I knew it had, that went with it, and the master plan was what I had for a plan, and, you know, if I can make that work and it can be, you know, within the confines of the law and what I'm allowed to do there, then that's why I'm here.
Mr. Marley?
Sorry, just one quick follow-up question. You described the, you know, the permit and master... You described the, you know, the permit in Massachusetts and how, you know, how strict it is and how the standards...
I didn't hear the first part, please.
Sorry. You described the, the permit you had to obtain in Massachusetts and, you know, the, all the requirements you had to meet, the strictness of that permit. Do you understand generally that the New Hampshire permit will be, sort of, will require similar standards to what you are required to meet in Massachusetts?
For the state of New Hampshire, you mean?
Correct.
Absolutely. We have every intention of having to meet every piece of criteria that they require. Absolutely.
Right. Yeah, I was just asking, do you understand the requirements in New Hampshire to be similar to the requirements in Massachusetts?
Of course I do. Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions by the board for the applicant? I've got a question for staff, and maybe, actually, Mr. Sullivan can do this.
Thank you.
I think I'm kind of understanding a little bit better about the TOD, and can you just, for the record, kind of explain the TOD in a little more detail?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. But if I may, Mr. Chair, can I just respond to some of the comments and questions that have been asked by the board this evening? To be clear, we, the city, did have conversations with the applicant about the alignment of this proposal with the current adopted Imagine Nashua master plan, and frankly, about our concerns with how this commercial use would align with what we anticipate to be new, quite an influx of new residential units in the adjacent area to the project. And while we may not be comfortable with some aspects of this use, and we've been very clear about that, the applicant is absolutely correct that under both the TOD and even as a permitted use within the zoning district, this use is permitted. And as a result, our conversations quickly turned to how to best mitigate the impacts of the use, rather than whether or not it was a permitted one, because quite frankly, that was, that was clear to us. But I want to address Mr. Meehan's comments directly. We did have conversations. There was discomfort with the applicant, but ultimately, this is yet another example of a misalignment between some of the ambitious goals in the master plan and the existing zoning that exists in, in certain areas of our community. And this is perhaps one of the most obvious and glaring ones in the East Hollis Street corridor, where we have very ambitious goals about mixed-use development in this area and transit-oriented development in the context of the Crown Street rail station that may or may not happen at some time in the future. So those concerns are, are very reasonable, but the applicant is absolutely correct in saying that this, this is a permitted use, and so that ultimately ruled the conversation. Turning to the question about the transit-oriented development zone, this is a, an innovative land use control that essentially takes the powers that are traditionally awarded to the zoning board of adjustment to grant relief from zoning and returns those to the planning board in your control, inherently giving you more flexibility in approving site plans within this zoning district or this zoning overlay district. Ultimately, ultimately, it gives you the planning board, in the context of review of a site plan suitability report, the authority to either approve or deny site plans within this, within this area. It is, however, an overlay zone over underlying, under, underlying base zoning. The issue here is that some of these uses, this permitted, this use is in fact permitted in the underlying zone, and therefore, it's more nuanced and complicated where we have a TOD, but then ultimately, an underlying zone that permits the use. And so ultimately, I believe the board is, is some, in some ways, its hands are tied to approve the use itself, but you can, in fact, discuss in the context of the site plan suitability, whether or not the applicant has taken appropriate measures to mitigate the impact to surrounding properties. And I would just reiterate for the record, I'm very concerned about how this use will interface with those surrounding residential uses, but I'm not sure that the board has the legal authority this evening to deny it on that basis alone, and I would instead recommend that the board use what tools it has in its quiver of the site plan review regulations to mandate any specific conditions that might mitigate its impact. So hopefully, that answers your question, Mr. Chair. There's concern, but there's also, there's, you know, it's pretty clear within zoning that this is in fact a permitted use, despite our concerns otherwise.
Mr. Varley?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question on that, Matt. Just so I understand, because my, my understanding, albeit may not have been entirely accurate, but in terms of, you know, the TOD or other overlay districts, that, as you said, it, what it does effectively is it creates flexibility so that the board could, I think, permit a use that otherwise would not be permitted in the underlying zone, right? As you said, where this is a permitted use, I just, I just want to be clear, do you understand the, the transit overlay to enable the board to impose different conditions than we would otherwise be able to impose, or are you suggesting that we could simply do that within the existing authority the board has?
Well, you actually raised a different question, too, that I think I should address, and that is, with the TOD as an overlay, despite the permitted use in the underlying zone, does the board have the authority to deny the use simply because the TOD exists, which I think is a, a different question? But to address your initial question, Mr. Varley, I believe that the authority of the TOD gives the board more abilities beyond its traditional site plan review regulation authority to require additional things in the context of that site plan suitability analysis that it's required to perform. So whether or not it's a clear site plan review regulation, I believe the board can ask for additional things beyond what those regulations stipulate, in the interest of creating a site plan that ultimately is compatible with the uses within the TOD. Does that answer your initial question?
It does, yes.
Additional powers granted, yes.
Yes.
The interesting question that I raise is, you know, the TOD overlies, you know, an underlying zone that permits a use, does the TOD also give the board the authority to actually prohibit a use that's allowed in the underlying zone? That's actually not something I'm comfortable weighing in on this evening. It's a question that certainly popped into my mind. It's a bit complex, I think, when you're dealing with an overlay district, but I believe the use is permitted in the zone, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I, I have just been reading it, and I think I view it or understand it to be an enabling sort of legislation, where, as you, as Mr. Sullivan spoke to, it enable, it enables additional uses in zones that, where they don't exist. But I don't, I don't, which, which, those uses are residential uses in alignment with our master plan goals.
Correct.
But I don't see where it prohibits the underlying zones, and it specifically basically says that, you know, uses permitted in the underlying zone and district are permitted in a TOD overlay district, so. I just wanted to kind of restate in a different way, basically, what Mr. Sullivan said, and my understanding, I haven't read it.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. Meehan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Matt, and we've talked a lot about the zoning and the lag.
Yeah.
Right, and that's, it's just tough, but it is what it is. How do you assess traffic usage? It seems like we're, we're very limiting, we're limiting the impact of the traffic to that specific site, whereas we know that they're gonna have to get there through what essentially is an urban space.
Yes.
That is rapidly developing into a commuter, rail, and residential. We're talking a hundred, a hundred and fifty trucks. How, how, what's a valid way to really assess that traffic flow from the city's perspective?
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm gonna provide what might be a cheap and easy answer to this, but it's actually something that arose as part of your consideration of 591 West Hollis Street. When we recognize that there are systemic issues with a given corridor in the city, and we actually dealt with this on the Costco approval as well, where we have this sort of, this general corridor that's in failure, it's my opinion, it's not on an individual applicant to ultimately provide the silver, silver bullet or be responsible for the remedy. They're responsible for their share, mitigating their share of that traffic impact. But ultimately, that responsibility does, does fall to the city, and I'm not gesturing to engineer Hudson, but it is really us, in looking at a comprehensive traffic study, much like we're talking about in the context of West Hollis Street. So as we, and again, we saw this in the case of Costco and Spibro Road and Daniel Upster Highway, it's ultimately on the city to identify these corridors that might be in failure, ultimately perform a more comprehensive traffic study that may include signalization and other adjustments that need to be made, but it's not on individual applicants. However, part of the reason that we have these corridor funds that exist and we request contributions is that ultimately, we want to build up a fund that can support a study of that magnitude down the road. And so that's really why we're collecting these individual contributions that go to our corridor-based funds, because ultimately, we know there will be a breaking point for a lot of these corridors where development is happening, and having the fund, funding available to actually perform the study necessary is part of this board's review process. Does that answer your question, Mr. Meehan?
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, and I would just, I don't think Mr. Sullivan intended to create the impression that Temple Street or Commercial Street were in failure, because they certainly aren't. The traffic volumes that were presented on those streets are fairly low. It's the other major corridors, you know, in proximity, I think we're talking to, that are more heavily congested and might suffer from those. The, the issue proximate to the site is the, the makeup of the traffic, basically. It's, it's that it's a, you know, heavy trucking type of mix, but the volumes themselves that we're speaking of are not high volumes. A hundred and fifty, anything a day is not a large volume at all. But, but, yeah, given that it's all, you know, primarily trucking, you're gonna notice that. But from a capacity standpoint, on Commercial Street, Temple Street, it's of no concern.
Other questions by the board? I'm gonna put something out, because I think I want to get some feedback from the applicant on it, but I want to discuss it with the board first, because I'm sort of getting a feel for the board as I'm kind of sitting here. Understanding the actual, what's being constructed, what it looks like, what it smells like, what it sounds like, and the actual proximities to stuff on site, I think is probably, and you can nod if I'm right, important to everybody that's here. So I'm gonna go out on my own here and propose that I, I think this application probably requires a site visit by the board. Like, I don't, I don't know that I would be more comfortable with a board actual visit to the site, walk the actual locations of what's being proposed. I would, I would actually ask the applicant if they have, if they're open to us visiting their existing site in Westford, it's not really that far away, so we can ask questions there to understand it, not just like make our own assumptions by driving by kind of thing. And, you know, that's, I don't know whether that's at the same day, or it could be two separate days we could set this up. I mean, there are applications in this size that we've absolutely done this before, and they're less complex, as far as I'm concerned. This is actually more complex than, than some of the ones. But I, I'm gonna propose that this, that that be done for this application. But I do, I want to communicate with the applicant, it's their site, it's their other, I mean, would you be willing to come up and, or, and offer whether that's a possibility for us? You know, because while we're in the hearing, you can still talk, so.
And this would be going to the Westford plant? Or do you want to go to the facility over on...
I mean, my, Scott, my two cents on that is, and, you know, I think it would be more useful, meaningful for, for us to see, you know, the Westford site, where it's actually the asphalt facility in operation. It seems we could all individually go to the Temple Street site. You know, that's just my two cents, it would be, it would be valuable to the extent that we could see the facility in operation in Westford, since it's gonna be representative of what would be on this site.
Yeah, my only thing about the Temple site is similar to some of the other visits where we've done with the landing, is we can actually say, and stand and say, this is where it's gonna be, and you can see. I mean, we all know the other developments. We know the Hangar Building, Henry Hangar. We know the Temple proposed developments that have come before the board that aren't under construction. I would propose that planning have those, other developments that have been before the board, have those documents available for us while we're there on the site, so that we can physically kind of see that. Because I just feel like there's a lot of ambiguity and not clear understanding. I mean, I don't have it as much, and I'm an engineer, so I feel like I, I need it, so I can sympathize with others who maybe don't understand the process as much. I think it's a big decision. I think it warrants that activity by the board. I know it takes some time. We can be flexible for the applicant, I think, and responsive.
We have no problem with coming to visit the site. We'd be glad to show you the site. We don't have a problem with it. But it's my understanding that the meeting is closed. You're going to go just between yourselves to the site.
Yeah, what I would do is, we would table, you know, we'd close the hearing for now. This is my, I'm looking to staff to see, you know, typically, we'd close the hearing, we would go into our meeting, make the motion that we want to do these visits. We do the visits, and then we reopen, we would reopen the hearing so we can talk to you at the subsequent meeting. So that, I mean, the board's gonna have to vote on this. This isn't my decision, but I, I'm proposing a, a method to get more information here, but I'm looking to you during the hearing now, because we can converse.
We have no problem going. I just want to know when my job stops, and I don't have to get, keep looking for something coming over my shoulder. And normally, this would stop tonight. You would take a vote, and we'd go from there. I don't mind you coming out before you take the vote, to look at the site and see if there's certain things that you, you...
Yeah, if we table it, we obviously wouldn't be voting on approval or disapproval of the applications in front of us. We'd be table like, no. And then at our, you know, we could pick the date of what we want to do this from.
We're gonna do it before the next meeting?
I think we would try to do the visit pretty quickly. I think that's a better...
Okay, so you want to go as a group, so we have a, a public site walk, just like you did it to Spibro?
I think it's beneficial for the board to talk on the site, and that we can't go and talk on the site unless we actually call it a public visit, yeah.
And publics afford the opportunity to attend as well.
Sure.
Which is, which is, you know...
Yeah, they won't, we won't have a public discussion, per se, on the site, but the public can walk around while we're walking and listen to us, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I personally would welcome that opportunity. I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I would be way more comfortable seeing it all and understanding it, so.
You, you're asking for the one on Temple Street to go visit, right?
No.
Are you going, want to go to Westford?
I'm talking about both. I'm talking about both, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it one day, I don't care. We can go from one, they're not that far apart, if we could go one to the other.
Either one, either one, anything you want.
Yeah, I mean, in, in the interest of moving things forward, I'd kind of say we'd do it, you know, we'd maybe go visit the existing, the, the Westford site to see what it is, and then we go to Temple.
The only thing I caution is, Westford is a different type of operation than what is proposed here.
And I think the...
It's hard to understand that, but that's fine. Come out and see it and see what's, what...
Well, I think we could, you know, while we're there, the applicant could explain how it's different, you know, but it would be a little more visual to us, so.
Fine.
Okay, so we'll table it to, well, you'll take a vote, and if you want to table it to June 16th, and if you have an idea of when you're looking to do this site visit, do you need to get it posted, and, or is it something that you want all have time to look at your schedule and, and get to us?
I will just, I can tell you right now, I'm not gonna be here June 16th, you know, I'm not suggesting that should determine when to do this.
No, I, I think it's probably gonna take, realistically, two meetings. You know, it's gonna take some time, get the visit done. I'm not sure it's gonna be ready for the 16th. It's probably the July meeting that we...
Actually, for the July meeting.
But I mean, that's okay, we can still get...
You have to do it, you have to be July, the 14th.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be up to the board, but I don't want to...
Okay, yeah, so if you wanted then...
I'll, I'd rather close the, it sounds like the applicant's amenable to it, so I'll go ahead and, I'm gonna close the hearing for now, and now we're in the meeting, so that we can talk as a board about that kind of stuff.
Sounds good.
With staff, obviously. So, so I don't know, with comments on what I'm proposing, I mean, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it's, as you said, it's, it's important enough to be able to go see if the site in operation, but also, I, I think you're right, to see the, the Temple Street site, where we can sort of all be standing together, ask questions, and, and you know, to Mr. Sullivan's point about, you know, his view that... Mr. Sullivan's point about, you know, his view that we do have, you know, additional authority under, you know, the overlay district as well to think about, you know, other conditions. I honestly wouldn't have, I don't feel like I would be in a position right now to be able to make a judgment about what those conditions might be, you know, without doing that additional diligence. So I, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Mann?
Yes, sir. I, I thank you. I agree. And I don't know if staff could provide additional resource, information about the, the laying over of the districts and how that works for us, that we can have a little bit of clarity.
Yeah, and I, I think we need the, sort of the approved plans and the proposed plans for Temple and for Henry Hanger. You know, there's, there's several developments that have already been before us, right there. So I'd like to understand those in the context of standing there.
TOD.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, and I know I keep saying this, but I am, and maybe this is for Matt, but Murray Court, you know, there's three apartment buildings adjoining this property, abutting the property, and I understand they're low income. Has there been any outreach? Is this something that we just, the sign is insufficient? It seemed like something we would wanna be able to have engage in some of them.
Well, we always encourage the applicant to reach out to the abutters.
But they have not, pointy they have not.
No, but we also do send out the abutter notices, and the, the owners of those properties would have been notified as well, and the only, only one person here to speak against the project, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I would say to that point, I mean, obviously the city has an obligation to provide notice, which they've done. I, I agree with you. We do, we do encourage applicants to, to make outreach. You know, we know that there, as Linda said, there, there was only the one abutter who was here testifying. You know, I, I don't know whether that means that those folks just didn't observe or didn't look at the notice or don't have concerns, but.
All right, so I guess, Mr. Peterson.
If and when we do make a trip to the, to the Westford facility, I think we should do it during business hours, not in the off hours. We wanna see, you know, what it's like, what the traffic flow is, not quiet time after six P M.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess if we wanna do this, I think maybe the best mechanism is, so I'll make a motion to propose any two visits. I think that staff and myself could coordinate the visits with the applicant and the rest of you. I don't think we have to pick a, a date, time here kinda thing for the visit. You know, that could be coordinated through staff and communication with us about, you know, times available and stuff. I mean, I think that seems reasonable to me. But we should pick a table date for the, to, for the applicant's sake of when we would expect to be wanting them back and, and have completed ideally our due diligence, so, so they're not just kinda hanging out there. And I would say that in my mind shouldn't be any more than two meetings, but.
Yeah, I, but we should table to a date certain.
Yeah, yeah.
September? Is that too far? Just September first?
Uh, I think, let's take it July.
July.
Yeah.
On the fourth.
Yeah, that'd be far.
That would be, yeah.
I think two meetings, we're kinda obligated to kinda move quickly on getting our due diligence done. That gives us such a.
He'd miss it.
Like a month.
That's why.
Well, you can dial in. I mean, you can go in a zone.
Now where are you?
We're even a phone call. All right, so does someone wanna propose that? Make that motion?
I try.
Mr. Mann, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I move to table.
Remember, there's four of them here, so.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I think we do them as a.
I think you just do them together, right? So I would just read off the case numbers for all four of them.
Okay, here we go. Sorry. I move to table, case numbers A two one dash zero three zero zero, A two one dash zero three zero one, and A two one dash zero three zero two. And A two one dash zero two nine nine to the June sixteenth meeting.
July sixteenth.
I'm sorry.
July fourteenth.
Fourteenth, I'm wrong. July fourteenth is the last one, right?
Yeah.
July, I'm sorry, right. July fourteenth meeting. And that staff work with the board chair to coordinate a visit to the Westford plant?
That's, that's fine. You can just say that. We, we know what it means.
The current plant that is under operation and the site as proposed in these cases. If that's sufficient.
Yeah, I think that's fine. Does someone want a second there?
Somebody there?
Any further discussion by the board? All right, hearing none. I will, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, my motion passes. Okay, so, yeah, I'll work, staff and myself will work with the applicant to kinda get coordinated, but the intention would be we'll try to get a date that's, you know, obviously between now and that, that next, that July fourteenth meeting to get this due diligence done, so. Okay, thank you very much. Moving forward with the agenda, I'm gonna move on to new business site plan. This is case number A twenty-two dash zero zero eight six, City Nashua owner. This is an application acceptance of a proposed construction of onsite thirty parking, excuse me, onsite thirty space parking lot with access road, construction of relocated basketball court and nine parallel parking spaces on the west side of Atherton Avenue. This property is located at L. Atherton Avenue. So for the board, does anybody have a chance to make, take a look at this? I wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction. Mr. Bradley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion as to A twenty-two dash zero zero eight six. This application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
All right, so you have that motion to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Mann. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, we have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody who's speaking on behalf of the city?
Hi, good evening. My name is Matthew Franz of Nine Riverside Street in Nashua. Here on behalf of the applicant, Lisa Fotto, the Director of Public Works. I do have a, I have the copy of the plans. You guys are all set?
Yep.
Okay. So this project rehabbed an existing recreational facility that currently serves for baseball and softball fields, two nine V nine sports. This facility also has a basketball court, some swing sets, and some small recreational equipment. One thing it does not have though is any onsite parking, or really any on-street parking on the park side. I think there is on-street parking on the residential side, but it's very limited, the amount of parking that is provided to go along with the, with the existing facility. Park topography really runs from all sides into the middle of the park and is completely contained. All the runoff is contained on the park and does not, does not drain at all to the abutting properties. The proposed conditions are to change from baseball to so, to two seven B seven soccer fields, to relocate, to, to provide parking on the facility, to relocate the basketball court. We do wanna provide a basketball court still, so we do wanna reconstruct that in a different location. We also wanna provide some on-street parking to help accommodate, to help provide as much access to facility as possible. Comments that we did receive in-house from Mr. Mendola reflect handicap spaces being provided, which are not shown on the current plan. But we do provide, we will provide a couple of handicap spaces as an update to the plan. And as a part of this process, we do request five waivers. One for the location of existing conditions, the abutting lots, due to the size of the parcel, the number of lots, and the, limited, the project really being limited to the existing, currently developed area of the park. We're asking for a waiver on the local existing conditions on the abutting parcels. Asking for a waiver for the provision of median islands in the parking area. Due to the amount of space we have, we really did wanna maximize the amount of parking we can provide. Each row provides fifteen spaces. The median islands are required at ten. So we do ask for a waiver on that, just to provide the extra space or two that would, that would allow. Third waiver would be for provision of overhead service connection. There's an existing overhead power connection to the shed area of the park that provides, oh, I guess electrical service for the, for an overhead security light that's there. We wanna retain that connection to provide power to the irrigation equipment that'll be, that'll be provided for the fields. And is also to power a security light if needed for police security. Fourth waiver would be for the number of off-street parking spaces as required for the, dependent upon the gross square footage provided for building area on the park. We're only providing four hundred square feet of shed space, so we ask for a waiver for that requirement. And fifth waiver would be for location of all permanent monuments, property lines, the street lot lines, and easements. The size of the property, the expense on the project to locate all the property lines on the back sides of a lot, which are uphill, and certainly nowhere near the, nowhere near the facility. We do ask for a waiver on that to keep the cost down. So that's my presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Any question by the board for the applicant? Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, so you, the waiver request number four was not necessary because you're gonna include the handicap parking spots?
Uh, no, we, we would like to, number four.
I can clarify that if you may be. The request for a waiver NRO one ninety, one ninety-eight, if you're going to include handicap spaces, you can cross out the one ninety-nine and the two handicap spaces on the next line.
But the minimum parking waiver is still required?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just the handicap.
Okay.
Other questions by the board? You start them?
Just more of a statement. Engineer Franz introduced himself as a local resident, which he is, but he's also a senior staff engineer in Engineering Department. This is a project that we're trying to do efficiently, so this is basically all in-house survey design, and I believe construction will be primarily done in-house as well. So, but, but, you know, being a public facility, we did wanna bring it to the board for review. The added, adding of the parking stems from complaints we received from the neighborhood. Just to, you know, the reality is it's, these parks have, you know, significant use during games, and there just really isn't parking sufficiently now. So that's the purpose and intent of the project, and, and, yeah, I'd be happy to, in addition of Engineer Franz to answer any questions the board may have about it.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious. I live in this neighborhood and people are very excited about the opportunity to have parking there because that street is a nightmare when anything is going on. Is this funded? Is this something that can actually happen soon, or is this one of those things where you're waiting for a grant or something like that?
Well, I'll pass it off to the boss.
There, I, there is some funding. I don't have all the specifics of it. As I said, the, the bulk of the work's to be done in-house, and so I believe we have various sources of funding. And we do intend to do this construction this year pending approval. The fields will take some time to re-vegetate and that sort of thing, so once we start, it probably won't be playable this year for the rest of the year, but, but I think it is our intention to construct this this year for next year's use.
Other questions by the board? At this point, I'd open up to the audience. Is anybody reaching to speak in opposition or concerned? Come on up and state your name and address for record and go ahead and give us your concerns or ask your questions if you have one.
My name is Donna Kaphopoulos. I live at four Atherton. I'm right here. Playground's right there. Where is the road access gonna be?
The road, you mean the parking?
Yes.
I can, I can have the engineer explain it a little bit better if you'd like, when they, I'll have him come back up and, and tell you exactly. I'll point it out on the map.
Will there be plenty of lighting there at night?
I can have him answer both of those for you. So lighting, road access, and what, what number did you say you were?
Four.
Four Atherton.
Right in that corner.
I'm right next door.
Two nice dogs.
Anybody else reaching to speak in opposition, concerned, have a question? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Ryan Latalian. I live at seven Atherton.
Okay.
So for context, I recently moved into the area for this park, and I've been really excited about it. I like the improvements to the park. It needs some love. And within the past year, there has been two sets of condos, a twenty, twenty person and a five person within two hundred feet of the park. So that's, if, if you double that, twenty-five units at two, let's say two people per unit, that's, that's pushing fifty people, right? Less sixty people. You have two cars, you have thirty, forty cars, you know, in that direct area. So traffic, I have two small kids, ten and eight, and I really worried about the traffic, but behest. So one of the things that I'm worried about too is the grading. So on the orange on, on the screen, on the lot lines, there's, it's a one thirteen down to one oh seven. So I'm six feet tall, so essentially filling in six feet of lome to make that, that orange lot right there. Recently flooded this past winter. I, I live right across the street from that, so I could see a giant ice. I skated on it. So it turns into a giant puddle. I understand that the, the light blue section has a drainage, but I don't believe that's sufficient when that gets clogged with ice. So it'll, it'll make the basketball court unusable until the late spring when it melts. So I know that basketball court is used quite often, so, so drainage is an issue. I, I wanna make sure. One of the things that is on the, the project description, it says no lighting or landscaping is being proposed. I would like that to be something that we can consider. I would like to see a lighting and landscaping be proposed as part of this plan. They're, they're taking away landscaping. I wanted to have, make sure they're added back. So I really, really want this project to happen, but I wanna make sure that everything goes back to where it was and make it a better place than it was. So, so on the lighting part, there's thirty spots going in, and there is no lighting at the moment in that area. There's a dim light on electrical pole, so I wanna really make sure it's brightly lit because with thirty spots, really deep, it's a quiet, really enclosed park, so I really don't want to invite people to come hang out there, park there without any sort of lighting. So when, when you take away the lighting, you have some, you have some lighting, the parking lot, if you look at the screen, the gray part, there's a circle right up top. There's a, there's a large tree. That tree is, is quite large. That, that parking lot, I did some quick math, sixty-four feet by whatever it is long is about a quarter an acre. So a quarter of an acre of play, right, currently that today, that gray spot and that, that green spot is where all the kids play. So the green, the green is where kind of the big park area, they can throw your ball. But all the gray and the orange spots are where the kids play. The big tree that they're taking out, oops, sorry, the big tree they're taking out is a place for shade. place for shade, there's no shade at anywhere here. So, what I'd like to propose or object to is have something put back for shade. So, a lot of kids go there, they hang out underneath that big tree and that will not be there. Thank you on that one. The playground equipment location is at the end of a parking lot. Today, the swings are being used almost every day, I work from home, so I can see what happens and those swings are used almost all the time. Now, now, if the, the kids are playing on the swings, where are the parents going to stay? They would, they usually stay under the tree, so there's no place for the kids to, the parents to see their kids play. That's, that's that one. Lighting is what I mentioned. Also too, there is quite a few people that come in for the basketball court and they travel in through both sides. Now that, with that basketball court and the parking, that has increased traffic. So, as you probably have heard previously tonight, traffic is a problem in Nashua. I've lived here in Nashua, in the area since twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, and it's getting quite busy. With the twenty-five new units at the end of the street, it's, it's going to be a lot. The end of, on this map, it's not shown, if you look at the orange line, I'm the one across from that orange, there's two houses down, Dawn is on the other side of that. That's where the twenty-five units are, that's two hundred feet away. There is going to be parking that's going to be required there. Right next to that, that two hundred feet of parking is hundreds of parking spaces, hundreds. B A E's lot goes from Canal Street all the way up to Lock Street and they only use about half their lots. The two new condos or, two new building condos that have two units and three units, their backyard is a parking lot. The church never uses the full parking lot, maybe a fraction, maybe twenty spots, maybe thirty spots. There's hundreds of parking spots two hundred feet away. So, I want to make sure that that's clear, is that I don't believe we need to really pull apart those twenty. Maybe the eight can go, we have some other questions about, from other people about those eight along the street, but I think there's two hundred, several hundred spots of two hundred feet away. And then, I think, I think those are my notes, so.
So, just so I'm clear, are you for the parking or against the parking?
I am for the park, but not the parking, not the parking.
Say that again?
I am for the park, but not the parking.
Got it.
I think that with the increased, with the increased traffic, it's just so many people coming in and out. People use our street, our driveway to turn around it.
Right.
Because of the, the way that the parking is currently, people park half-on. So, there, that needs to be fixed, that half-on parking, but there's parking right near, but they don't use it. And I want the park to be more improved for my kids.
Okay, all right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Lisa Zabo, I also live at seven Atherton Ave, unit four. How y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Like Ryan, I'm also for the park, but against the parking lot. I think he made some good points, there is a ton of parking already available on Lock Street. And I can't imagine that some deal cannot be worked out to utilize the parking already available there and then the short walk to the park. People turning down the street to get into that parking lot is going to, like, the street is very, very narrow as it is and there's sidewalk on one side, but not on the other. And kids are up and down there all day long and kids are kids, you know how they are, they're not looking, they're not paying attention. It, too much traffic on the street itself, right by the park, someone's going to get hit, it's asking for an accident. My other huge concern is these trees, that if you look on the plan right there, the one over there at the, the trunk at about four and a half feet is over eighteen feet in circumference. That tree has got to be at least three hundred years old, it's going to have a root system that extends at least three meters beyond the canopy. I don't see anything in here about an arborist coming out to make sure that we are preserving these trees and that none of this building or planning is going to affect them at all. And I think that's significant. These trees have been around longer than Nashua itself and they should probably be looked at and preserved. Ryan also made an excellent point with that basketball court there, where you're looking, there's a significant grade, it floods, it fills in. If you raise that up in order to level it out, we're going to have significant drainage problems, which we already have, that have been increasing with the increased snowfall and increased rainfall over the past few years. Just this past, we had our entire, like, driveway flood because the drains got filled in so much with debris that they couldn't be cleared in time to allow the drainage to occur. And so I think that's really what we're looking at. Though I did notice here, and I didn't, didn't know this before, apparently this is also an asbestos fill site. It's marked on the site that says existing conditions plan. And they mentioned that they're not going to disturb this in any way. I don't understand how that's possible though, if they're utilizing the entirety of the park when they redo this. And so, I mean, it's dirt, it's debris, if you're going to stir up asbestos fibers, I'm, I'm sure we don't want a cancer cluster of mesothelioma in the neighborhood. Has anyone like looked into?
We can, we can ask the questions, I'm, I'm not sure, so.
Okay. So, I would love this park, I'm right across the street from it, you know, my, it was one of the reasons that I chose to move in where I did, but I think there's some pretty significant things that need to be looked at here before going forward. Yeah. And that's all I have for the moment. Have a great night.
Thanks, appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Somebody on the room?
Uh, yes, can I speak?
Yep, go ahead, yep.
Okay, my name is Kathleen McLendon, I live at two David Drive, which is at the very north end of the park. I'm actually for more parking at the park, but I don't understand why we're going to spend hundreds of thousands, if not a million dollars remaking the park when it's really pretty nice the way it is. Leave the basketball courts, leave the playground. There's open space between two of those really old trees, I think if you cut the curb and just grade it, you can just have dirt parking, kind of like they do at Greeley. And then leave the rest of the park like it is, let the people park on the grass, you know, in selected spots and save the taxpayers a lot of money and pretty much keep the park as an open space like it is now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else online? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? All right, so go ahead, ask the board, any further questions while we're in the hearing?
I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I don't, we want to have, do rebuttal from?
Oh, from the city, yeah, we should probably, yeah, do you want to speak a little bit to maybe lighting, parking, grading of the, at the basketball court? Thoughts on that?
Sure, again, my name's Matthew Franz, live at eight Hazel Avenue, but of course work for the city. Sure, so in regards to lighting, I think that's something, as far as security concerns goes, we can certainly enhance the lighting if that's what's needed. We do have the one area light, which I think, you know, kind of just sticks with the current security system they have out there to light up the backside of the shed to allow, I guess, passing officers be able to see the surrounding area. If that's what's agreed to, I think that's something the city can perhaps work in, you know, if that's, you know, agreeable with the, with the budget, of course. In regards to, what was the rest?
Grading, grading of the basketball?
So, so grading of the basketball court.
Yeah.
So, we do kind of separate some of the flow that's currently heading in that general direction by keeping the soccer fields and most of the north side of the property, you know, contained to, to within the soccer field area from the midfield and the west side of that northern soccer field. There is a drainage pipe coming in from Perham Street that does drain down to that area, all that would, no longer, if it does continue on to that southern and east side of the property, that's all going to be contained on that northwest side of the property. Yeah, we do fill it in for the basketball court. We do try to provide ponding onto the parking lot, up onto the basketball court and into the soccer fields to contain any runoff up to the hundred-year storm. There really isn't any runoff that currently, currently leaves the site, so any maintenance of the street catch basins causing any other issues, that's nothing that we're, we're going to be dealing with at all, we're just going to contain everything in the site. It's leaching catch basin, so we can expand that if we do want to add a little bit of leaching capacity to try and, try and infiltrate water faster if the basketball court is being used in the winter and that is the kind of thing that becomes an interest, that's, it's certainly, it would be, you know, feasible for the city to expand upon. As far as the asbestos fill site, did hear that get mentioned, this is all contained to an area that is not part of the asbestos fill site, that is being monitored by the city. The asbestos fill is on the hillside. It's not in the lower area at all, it's all on the upper hillside and, you know, we just stay away from that completely. The asbestos fill? Yeah. That's not my department necessarily, but waste, solid waste department, you know, monitors that. Darren, I forget Darren's name now.
Santos.
Darren Santos has taken over for the gentleman who was monitoring for the last thirty years or so. It is something they keep an eye on.
Yeah, that, to that point, the, the fill isn't like, it's not like the city did an asbestos deposit here, it's fill that was placed by others over the years to, you know, fill the area that the properties have built upon. So, that slope, we do monitor it, every year we, we, we go out and monitor it. Every year we do find some asbestos that's come to the surface and we remove it and dispose of it, but properly, but.
But you service more, once you get out there and you start to stir it again and then remove your equipment?
Yeah, it's our, it was, the design was specifically done to toe out before the, any of that slope, so we're not digging in, into any of that slope where we're, we're aware there is some asbestos, historic asbestos fill. Matt spoke to the lighting, I think it was our intent to light the parking lot primarily. We're not proposing lighted fields for use at night here or anything like that, it's just a security measure.
Just for security, yeah.
So, there is a light on a pole, it's our intention to kind of replace in kind or relocate even, but maybe not even, if, if it's a dim light, maybe we'll put up an LED light, right? But, but I, I thought would be, we would aim it towards the parking lot and whatever structure there may be for the irrigation.
Is there like a large tree being removed for the?
No, well, there is a tree, yeah, near the entrance, you want to speak to that, Matt?
Sure, so there's several trees, of course, that lie in the street. We tried to, I tried to position the parking lot coming in through some of the newer trees that were planted. You mentioned the big tree that's in the middle of the parking lot, and that's an invasive species, I believe it's a Norway spruce.
Norway maple?
Yeah, maple.
Just, just, I can't have a conversation like, I can't have a conversation like this because it's literally, doesn't pick up on the thing, so.
So, yeah, so, so.
I appreciate it.
So, we did, we did take the trees into consideration, we actually designed around that, that big tree for a little while until we found out it was an invasive species and that it improved the capabilities of the park. We were able to straighten out the parking lot to come straight in there. We've been, tried to keep them all into consideration and we feel like we minimized the damage coming in off the road, the way position that we kept. There's obviously a big tree kind of by the, on the street side of the ba, the proposed basketball court, they were hoping to keep all those as well as everything, all the trees heading further to the north. As far as replanting, we don't show any replanting here, that is not something that I show as a, as a part of this, but it's certainly something we can take into consideration.
Just question with the parking, so the genesis of the parking desire? So, it seems like we have a butters that don't want parking. And usually, I'll be a hundred percent honest, we get the opposite of that when it comes to these parks, so, because people are parking all over everybody's front lawns and everything, so maybe that's not happening here, which is great, great, so that's a good thing. So, I'm just trying to understand if the butters don't want any of what's going on here, which seems to be what I'm hearing, what's the genesis of why we're even doing this? Does anybody, is, is there other butters that came forward and said, "We really want this?" Or?
Yeah, I think it's two, I think the count is two, two, two for two. We had another person on the line, I think it was in favor, but this kind of evolved, we, primarily it was a field project, we were going to remove the baseball fields and put in soccer fields, given the demand for soccer fields in the city. But we have had historic complaints about the traffic and lack of parking, that sort of thing, so then we're like, well, we should add a, add a parking lot. I do understand there's many parking spaces nearby, those are private property, we don't have any existing arrangements with any of them. This parking lot would provide the ability to have a handicap at park spots, you know, proximity to the, the features that are there. So, I think that was the thought process, I mean, we tried to size it for what we could, you know, for, for what the space would accommodate, but also it kind of aligns pretty well with two fields being, two, seven V seven fields being occupied by players and parents, so it seems to be, you know, fairly suitable for the use. We are, is still in the process of identifying what the playground will be. Park Superintendent Brian Conant, he has been speaking with playground equipment vendors and will figure that out. I don't want to commit to providing shading at this time, there are other parks where we provide some, you know, some sales over the playgrounds and that sort of thing. I don't think we have the luxury of that kind of funding currently right now. This will not be a million-dollar project, that's not anywhere near close to what we're talking about here. As I, as I said in the beginning, it's a, I believe, fair, a fairly low-budget exercise with in-house construction, we'll, you will need a contractor to help us with some of the irrigation probably. But the parking lot, I believe we intend to construct ourselves, the basketball court, and then of course we'll need to purchase playground equipment. The, the big tree up, that, you know, proximity to the parallel parking on, on the road, I mean, we're, we're comfortable removing some of that as necessary to protect that tree, certainly not our intent to damage the tree, so that's an issue that we, we were already thinking about before we came tonight and it's been, been discussed and we will look more closely at.
I mean, does it make sense to kind of take in some of the comments and, I mean, this is the city plan, so kind of a little more flexibility as well. And, and, I don't know, circulate it to the butters to get comments? I don't know, I mean, I mean, this is a city thing, so, I mean, I'm looking to staff. I don't love the city building things that the butters don't like, but it's, I understand there's some butters that want certain things and some don't, but there aren't any here that, that they're saying they want, so.
Yeah, I would just note that, you know, I live around the corner in Thorough's Landing, which is just further around. And you can't drive down that street when there's an event happening because of the parking, there's curbs on both sides of the street, so you can't pull up onto something else, you have to park in the street. And we watch police come down to try to clear because it's impassable if there's an event happening. One of my concerns honestly was, is that enough parking? Because you're going to increase the usage dramatically by having two soccer fields. And is that going to be sufficient parking or are you just going to have that full industry full and, and more usage? But I think it's, it's a great step forward from where we have been. The basketball courts get used all the time, the swings get used all the time, it's, it's a well-used park. The biggest issue that I have experienced personally and with my neighbors is the lack of parking. Because the seat, the street is very narrow, especially on that curve by her home, and people will park on that because there's no parking as anyone else.
Other questions by the board?
I, I keep waiting for B A E to bring a rezoning proposal for those one hundred and twenty lots that they have, it's the part, the ugliest part of Lock Street, to get rid of some of their parking, but they haven't done it yet. And it just sits right behind the fence and it's gated, so I don't see how, how it can be used by anybody else. They're very particular about not allowing it to be used or trespassed on.
Other questions by the board?
So I'm sorry, just with regards to the parking there, were any attempts made to approach the church, the Baptist church that is right across the street? Because my concern here with the parking lot is that we're just inviting more traffic onto the street, and that will, I think you are correct, fill up much too quickly, whenever they have their, their little flag football games on Sunday, which we love, and I'd like, I love going out there just to watch them. It's the entirety of Atherton Ave that gets filled, so beyond what you even see here. And they'll park down Avon. I think the best move, just personally, is to keep the parking off of Atherton altogether, the street is simply too narrow to handle it. But there is that gigantic parking lot at the church, there's, like, there's tons of available parking around, and it's no further a walk for anyone utilizing, you know, the park than it would be if they were parking all the way down the street.
Can you just state your name again for the record?
Oh, sorry, Alicia Zabo.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I mean, I think we've heard several, several concerns. Does anybody have any more questions for the city or in the hearing? I'll go ahead and close the hearing.
May I ask, is it possible for the city to engage, I mean, the Baptist church is also very consistently gating their parking spots as, as BAE does, is there any precedent that there would be an opportunity to work with them? Is that something that is possible or is that?
It's, it's something that we're willing to approach, I mean, I'll commit to reaching out to them, but my preference would be to approve the plan as is, and we'll continue to take input from the public, work with staff on alternatives if necessary, but have the ability to build it in the case that we reach out and we aren't able to make those agreements.
Okay. Okay, any other questions while we're in the hearing, the board? I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Move to the meeting, so it sounds like, you know, we have some, a little bit of competing interests, but it seems like everybody wants the park to be approved, it's just maybe not, don't have a solution that everybody's come to agreement on. I guess for the board's sake, there's two ways to go about this, I mean, we can approve it as is, we can disapprove it, we can, we can approve it with some other stipulations. You know, I'm interested in people's thoughts on whether, I mean, because it is the city as an advocate, and they can obviously work with staff, they're in the same, same organization, so there can be reasonable accommodations to the plan. I don't know, Mr. Barley, do you have any other ideas?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, to your point, I think, based on the discussions we've had, we've largely addressed sort of the, the other concerns that don't relate to whether there's parking or not, in terms of, I think, it sounds like the city's willing and able to work in terms of not removing shade trees, for example, working around that. And we talked about the asbestos issue and that, you know, that's not going to be disturbed and, and, you know, providing adequate lighting for the parking area. So it seems to me it comes down to, yes, there's this competing interest of, some of the butters want parking and some of them don't. I will say that, you know, even the, the two butters who are on Atherton Ave express concern about, you know, the narrowness of the street and, and the traffic there, Mr. Mead, to your point, it sounds like at least having some parking there would mitigate that issue to some, because right now if they're all just parking on the street and it's a narrow street, I don't know, I mean, it seems to me this would, you know, at least giving the city the option to put that parking in, like I said, could mitigate it, and that, to me, doesn't eliminate the desire or, you know, the, the consideration of other parking elements, you know, at the church, for example, you know, so if the city can reach agreement with the church to allow utilization of those spots, that's fantastic, but it seems to me we should at least have the optionality, which is going to, again, it seems like will improve, you know, the current situation on Atherton.
Ms. Harper?
I would just add that, and obviously it does add the accessibility, with ADA spaces, that does make the park a little bit more accessible for, for people.
Yeah, I would concur, at the minimum, that's a requirement, right? I mean, we wouldn't build a new park today without that.
Right.
I mean, that's, isn't acceptable, right? So, so that makes some sense. But do we feel like as a board, the modifications that could be contemplated here, which sound like they're saving trees, adding trees, modifying the lighting, maybe adjusting the parking or within the capability of working with staff and even communicating with the butters, if that's the same process that, you know, or do we feel like we need to see it, it's the big thing? So that's really the question. Mr. Peterson?
Just one more consideration, so if we have two new soccer fields, that means all the soccer families are going to show up during game time, and is that going to exacerbate the current parking, parking problem? Going to make it even worse, possibly? Unless the soccer family's carpool.
Those soccer fans.
I don't know, I mean, we get as many people coming into this board asking for more soccer fields as we do, you know what I mean? It's, this is a balanced job, it's always a balanced job with our parks, because people use them differently. And every time we try to do anything with the park, we get people that want it to be this or that or another thing. So I think as a board, we just have to weigh those different factors, you know?
Yeah, and generally, I mean, I didn't, it didn't sound like the butters in Atherton were saying, "We don't want soccer fields", it was concerned with the parking, and so it seems to me, again, if you potentially have increased usage that just reinforces that you would, you would think you would want some parking on site, even if you can ultimately, you know, find an arrangement with the church to utilize that parking, it seems to be, you know, if you're going to have increased use of the park, it's valuable to have some parking spaces, and again, talking about the, you know, the accessible spaces as well is important, so.
Mr. Mead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, I feel very comfortable with the plan, and especially the staff's willingness to work with the butters and to investigate the additional parking and what they've already done to avoid the trees, the asbestos issues, all of that, it seems like it's a real win for the neighborhood as far as improving that park.
So does it sound like the things we want the city to work with further through the staff is trying to either add or save more shade trees as much as possible and to, you know, increase the lighting a little bit more than is shown for security purposes? Those both seem to be important. And adjust the parking if necessary to.
Right, I mean.
To get towards some of those goals.
Yeah, so I guess in the first instance, you know, having that conversation with the church to see, you know, whether there's availability of parking, and if, if an arrangement can be reached to use a significant number of spaces there, then, then maybe that, maybe you only have a handful of spaces on Atherton, you know, you have the accessible spaces, so maybe that allows you to, you know, minimize the parking you have on site.
Yeah, minimize the cost, frankly.
But I would want to put the city staff into place of trying to navigate something that, from all appearances, would be not very likely, right?
Yeah, I agree.
I still think the plan as it stands is great, if something can be worked out, terrific, but I don't know that we can expect it to be successful because of BAE and that church's position so far.
A lot of factors.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson?
Also, I'm thinking on the stipulation list, we should provide caution not to disturb the asbestos that's currently there, you know, make that, make that part of the, that everybody's aware, not to go digging around where they're not supposed to.
Yeah, I mean, I think the city's sitting next to you almost, so.
Yeah.
They're the ones doing the construction, they're also the ones doing the monitoring, so I think, we don't have, it's not like a third party, you know, private developer that's going to do it.
I would agree, though, it might not be necessary, is all I'm saying in this situation.
I think I'm missing the joke.
No, I mean, just to Mr. Barley's point, when we have like a third party developer, you know, we don't, we don't have someone who's committing to it, but, you know, there's a commitment here with someone sitting on the board saying it, so.
We're aware of it. We don't desire to go digging in asbestos.
All right. Okay, so, does anybody, I mean, do someone want to propose some additional stipulation that, so the board can talk about it, you know, that covers some of the butters' issues? The wording of it, just so that, so that we can, it'd be good to kind of agree on that, additional stipulation before we make an actual motion with it.
I mean, the only stipulation I could envision would be one that, that indicates that, you know, the city agrees that it's going to pursue negotiations with the church to determine whether, you know, parking would be accessible there. You know, I think the things like the lighting, the grading for the basketball court, you know, the asbestos, you know, in my view, sort of, our historical precedent on those types of issues has been, you know, the record is, is pretty clear, and I don't know that we necessarily need additional stipulations there, particularly since they are, you know, some of these are elements of the plan already. So, I mean, I don't, if somebody feels strongly, we need to have something in there about, you know, preservation of, of, you know, the trees or something, you know, I suppose we could do that, but, but I think largely, you know, those are sort of, again, elements of the plan and components of the, of the record. The one that I would think about possibly would be saying that, you know, a stipulation is that, and I don't know, you have to think about, you know, where this would fall time-wise, but the city would, again, approach the church about parking.
And you could substitute condition six, because we do not have a letter from Joe Mandola, we're in the same office, so we solicited his comments directly and, and Matt's addressing those. But we didn't have, we didn't, he didn't provide a written.
Okay, so we don't need that stipulation?
Yeah, so we don't need that one, whatever, you could stipulate that and place it in number six.
All right. Mr. Peterson?
But as far as those items that Mr. Barley mentioned being elements of the plan, are they written into the plan about protecting the tree and don't disturb the soil and negotiating about the parking? Is that going to be in the plan?
Well, I think the parking, he's saying, "No, we probably want to add that." But as far as the, it's really the lighting and the shade trees, you could add something if somebody wants to.
Well, not in the plan, whoever goes and builds the thing is going to do it their way, because if it's not specified.
But again, just to reinforce, I mean, it's not whoever goes and builds the thing, I mean, it's, it's the city that's going to, that's going to do the construction.
It's the person next to you.
Left-handies know what the right hand is doing.
Yeah, I, so I just, I'm just saying it is, it is a little bit unique in that, you know, it's usually, it is some third party, and sometimes we would say, "Yeah, we want to, we want to have some more explicit conditions." But even then, you know, we will often have discussions with an applicant during the course of a hearing, and, and the applicant will say, "Yes, you know, we agree to do X, Y, or Z", and often that's sufficient, we don't feel the need to add an explicit stipulation, we'll say, "It's, it's on the record, you know, if the applicant were to fail to do that, we'll say, you know, you were on the record as agreeing to do that." I guess I view, you know, the, you know, sort of the non-disturbance of the asbestos and the, and, and the shade trees at least is probably falling into that category, you know, again, I understand if somebody feels strongly, we can add something, but that was sort of where I was coming from on that.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I mean, I, maybe a condition that, you know, gives us guidance, I mean, it is part of the record, but I don't, I don't mind a condition that, you know, recommends that additional landscaping be considered, that we seek, you know, seek additional parking off-site through, you know, through, through abiding properties. And I want to be clear about the tree, there is the one tree that's the invasive tree that we are going to cut, because it's, it's in proximity to the construction. We, early on, we did look at trying to avoid that tree, but in speaking with our Park Superintendent, you know, it was identified as invasive species, and so we came to the place that that tree's going to be cut, but the other large trees along roadway, it is our intent to preserve, and, you know, we can look at planting additional trees for the future, so I just wanted to be clear about that.
Specifically, there was reference to a, a large maple tree, that's, that was not, you're saying that was never proposed?
The shade tree that was discussed that is used for shade currently, that is the invasive tree that we're intending to cut.
Okay.
So, so some, some measure of replacing, you know, that, I think, was requested, and that would be something that we could look at.
So put something back that isn't invasive.
That isn't invasive, that will grow, of course, it's not going to be a, you know, magnificently large tree like that one right now, but there are the large trees along the road, I don't, I don't know exactly which way the sun goes, but there are some large trees, kind of at the ends of the soccer fields on the, on the slope by the road, so.
Mr. Irish?
I think, my, my concern is the, the parking issue. If you're making an arrangement with BAE or the church or whatever, it's not going to be a long-term relationship, because you're not paying for it, you're not buying the land, so therefore, where you have a park that could be around for many years, to plan it with, you know, anticipating the potential short-term use of parking nearby, I don't think there's any benefit there at all right now, because it'd only be for a short term, if you're getting it, some kind of ability, you know, three years, five years, whatever, I can't imagine getting it for a long-term relationship, and given the park, how long it's going to be around, I don't think we should even look at that as an option, or consider that. I think we should basically look at where we do want to sign.
Yeah, I guess, I think, you know, to Dan's point, he, he's asking for, let's approve the plan with the parking that it contemplates, and, and so I think the, the idea would be, the city can approach the church, and as, as you're saying, you know, maybe, first of all, maybe there's, they're not willing to agree to anything, but even if they are, it may not be long-term, so the, the city would still have the authority, if we approved the plan, to construct the, the parking as presented.
I'm saying we should do that, yes.
Yeah.
Agreed with you.
Okay. So do we feel like we need a stipulation on the lighting and the trees part? Is the record sufficient?
I mean, I'm happy, you know, Dan said, you know, fine, let's add it, so, we'll be, we'll be specific.
Someone want to take a shot at the most important?
I'll, I'll take a shot, sure. All right, so I would make a motion to approve new business A twenty-two dash zero zero eight six, City of Nashville owner, and this being, what is it, site plan? And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan in Arrow Section one ninety dash one forty-six D. And we're going to have a total of ten stipulations. The first five of those are waiver requests, and I'm going to, I'm going to be efficient here and just say, all five of those will read as granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number six will be removed in its entirety and replaced with the following. Are we okay with prior to the chair signing the plan, Dan, or do you want a different timing there?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Prior to the chair signing the plan, city engineering staff shall communicate with the Heritage Baptist Church to confirm whether the, the church would be willing to provide parking under some agreement with the city for, for use of the park. Stipulations seven and eight will be, as written in the staff report. A new stipulation nine will be added to indicate that the city staff and the city engineering department will ensure that they minimize the impact on shade trees, shade trees as a result of construction and provide additional shading as appropriate with new plantings to the extent that shade trees are removed. And then stipulation number ten will indicate that the, the city will provide. And then stipulation number 10 will indicate that the city will provide, ensure that there's appropriate lighting provided to illuminate the parking area that would ultimately be constructed.
All right. So we have those, that motion to approve with the 10 stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do you have a second on it?
Just one correction. On the fourth waiver, I believe they're going to provide handicap spaces now, so we want to cross out 199 and two handicap spaces.
Yeah, sorry, I'll just, I'll amend my motion in that respect to reflect the fact that stipulation number four, the waiver request there is just for the minimum parking standards, not from the handicap spaces that the plan will provide for the handicap spaces.
Okay. So with that amendment, do we have a second on that motion? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, done, that motion passed. Thank you very much for everybody's time. Moving forward, we just have a couple more quick things here. Other business number one, review of tentative agenda. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at that and want to make a motion as to whether there's any items of regional or potential regional impact? Do we have one in here?
I don't know. I didn't see one.
I'm not sure we have one.
I didn't see it.
Okay, so we'll skip that. And then last up, we have the, because we need to get through this one quick, the amendment to the FY 2023 capital improvement program. This is the proposed new item that was reviewed by the committee, I guess it was last week. This is West Pearl Street, streetscaping project. Matt, you want to just kind of present that quick?
Sure, be happy to. The, we commonly come back to the planning board for amendments to the capital improvement plan, this being the FY 2023 plan. This year, we had a project come in as part of a joint effort with the Walnut Street Oval Project, which was in the old iteration of the plan, but a project that's linked to it being a corridor improvement in the West Pearl Street area. This is adjacent to the Performing Arts Center construction. This project specifically is a $1.8 million project to improve lighting, streetscaping, make modifications to parking that will ultimately result in a reduction to parking, improve ADA access along the corridor, the small portion of the corridor, and really just enhance the public realm along on the West Pearl Street corridor. I will note, just for the record, that this is intended to align with a subsequent modification to the Walnut Street Oval that will result in a reformatting of the street network in that area and returning to the historic city grid, and ultimately a removal of the oval structure that exists there today. But that will come later, potentially in 2028, depending upon transportation funding. This is intended to connect to that at a later time, though. This construction, if approved, and it's currently being proposed to the Board of Alderman as part of a joint bond with the Walnut Street improvements, this would be done in fall of 2023. And so you see a construction happening here very, very quickly. Obviously, it also is an important gateway to the Performing Arts Center area and the downtown more generally, and it fits in with this larger vision of extending Main Street and the streetscaping standards along Main Street out to some of the peripheral streets that line up with it. And so this is certainly compatible with the objectives of the master plan. As you can see, this was granted or received a ranking of a B1 from the committee. That's the third lowest ranking, below an A1 and A2 ranking, but certainly was a pretty strong project score for an effort that is really an amenity project in a lot of ways, and typically those don't receive the best scores from the committee. So I think that's high praise from the committee in their recommendation here. I would respectfully request a motion by the planning board to adopt the FY 2023 CIP to include this project as ranked by the, as ranked or recommended by the CIC.
Questions, Mr. Peterson?
Questions? The mayor stated at one of his coffees with the mayor that once they do the walnut circle-
Yes.
-that they're going to have to reverse the direction of West Pearl Street so that East Pearl and West Pearl both head towards Main Street. So after all this work is done, we will have to redo it after they reverse the direction on the street. Is that correct?
Great question. It's something I actually focused on in my presentation to the CIC but didn't touch on this evening. The improvements are being designed such that the street direction could be reversed. One thing I will point out for the record, though, is that although that reversal is contemplated, there will be further traffic study needed. And so while we're planning for a potential reversal, there will be additional study that's necessary before actually executing a larger change to the circulation. That will also involve potentially East Pearl Street as well, but all of that study will take place when we're actually going through the Walnut Street Oval adjustments. This does contemplate those, though, yes.
So we won't have to redo this?
No, we'll tear it all out. No, I'm just kidding. No, it's, this is a long-term improvement, and so we would not have to redo it. It is being configured such that the direction could be changed, yes.
Thank you.
And that was very deliberate.
Yeah, and it works to, correct me if I'm wrong, the Walnut Street, you know, doesn't have to happen for this to be functional.
That's correct.
If it's functional even without that, so that delayed or whatever, this is still functional.
They're related, but not, you know, they're not dependent upon each other in order to- Correct.
And we ranked it a B?
Ranked it a B1.
B1, yeah.
Correct.
Motion to approve?
Yep. Any more discussion by the board? Questions for Matt? And take a motion. Again, this is our motion on this. I guess this is an approval.
It's an approval, and you can choose to include a recommendation to the Board of Alderman, but it's up to you. Thank you.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So moved.
Let's just spell it out. Just so we can, yeah.
Just, yeah, I mean-
Motion to approve the amendment number one to the approved fiscal year 2023 capital improvement plan and recommend it to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve this.
Second.
And make a favorable recommendation. We have a second from Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, done, that motion passes. All right. Anybody have some other discussion items?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair. Do we need to keep all this Temple Street material for the next meeting?
Yes.
Really want to bring it if we go to the, yeah. And then I'll get communicating with staff, like I said, quickly about some, but I would expect we probably need to do the visit before the end of June.
Okay.
Okay, if no other things, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. We are adjourned at 10:37. Everybody know the Celtic score?